You good? Okay, it's five o'clock. We are now going to call the Parks and Community Services Committee meeting. Started and first of all, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Always like people coming to our meeting. So we appreciate everyone attendance tonight. We will start off with Pledge of Allegiance. Amanda. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Chair Breed.
Present.
Vice Chair Levy.
Present.
Commissioner Dorlik is absent this evening. Commissioner Keeney.
Present.
Commissioner Mitra.
Present.
Commissioner Oslund is absent this evening. Commissioner Shetty.
Yeah.
Student Commissioner John Legata. Thank you.
Okay, we will start an agenda. Special items and announcements. Henry four point one.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the order of the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. And four point two. Amanda, welcome. Welcome, Dorson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioner Chair Breed. I'm honored to be standing before you to recognize one of our amazing aquatics team members, Terrence Lau. Now, Terrence joined us in May of 2023, and from the start, he's made a real splash. From day one, he's been incredibly dependable, hardworking, and positive. Whether he's watching the pool deck, helping guests, mentoring new staff, Terrence always keeps things afloat and also brings great energy and focus to everything that he does. He was named Senior Lifeguard of the Month for September. This is a well-deserved honor for his leadership and willingness to jump in and help whenever he's needed. His calm attitude and teamwork make a big difference for both staff and our patrons. Outside of work, Terrence is studying political science at Los Pacitas College, working towards a future career in law. He's clearly motivated inside and out of the pool. We're very lucky to have him on our team. I just want to take this time again to reiterate how grateful we are to honor Terrence today. Thank you, Terrence, for all you do to keep our pools safe and running smoothly.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Amanda. Okay. Thank you. Special announcements?
No special announcement.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, at this time. Members of the public are encouraged to address the Parks and Community Services Commission on any items that are not already included in tonight's agenda. Comments should not exceed three minutes, please. During public comment, members of the public are permitted to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda and are within the commission's jurisdiction. Kathy, do we have a public comment for this part?
We do. We have two. The first is Ramesh Imadi.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners.
Hang on for a minute. Wait one second. I got a timer.
Sorry.
That's okay. Sorry, Ramesh. Go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, respected Commissioners and city staff. My name is Ramesh. I'm part of the SRC Youth. I'm here to invite you all for the eighth edition of the Thanksgiving Tournament that will be hosted between 27th of November to 30th. And in this year edition, we have 28 teams coming from across the country, and matches will be hosted at Quellrun and Rancho Park in San Ramon, along with nine other locations. And the closing ceremony will be hosted at Inpluganton-Burnell Community Park at 6:00 PM on November 30th, which is Sunday. And I want to thank staff for providing the facilities, and this is the eighth year, and this is the most number of teams we have traveling as far as the Denver, from San Diego, Seattle, LA, and every academy in the area is accommodated in one or two teams. And unfortunately, because of lack of the fields, we rejected about 20 to 30 teams, including our own San Ramon youth. We are not able to accommodate. So but we will try. We are trying our best and hope to see you all at the closing ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Appreciate it.
And I apologize, the next one's for a future item. So just the one.
Okay, just one. Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Okay, we will go to approval of the minutes. So I wanted to make sure anyone had a chance to read the minutes. And so any questions on the minutes or comments? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved the motion for to approve the minutes of the meeting for the last meeting from October 8, 2025.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, and then.
I'm sorry, it's not working. We're gonna take a verbal.
That's what I thought.
So I'm sorry, who was the mover?
The Partha. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Mitra, I apologize.
And who was the second?
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you. All right. Chair Breed?
Yeah.
Chair Levy's a yes. Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Shetty?
Aye.
And that is it? Thank you. Passed.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are going to item 7.1, San Ramon's Trails Master Plan Preliminary Recommendation is presented by Keith. And just to make sure we are aligned on the objective, it is recommended that the Parks and Community Service Commission receive and provide feedback on the San Ramon Trails, sorry, San Ramon Trails Master Plan Preliminary Recommendation, and we were asked to focus on pages 45 through 67. Keith, the floor is yours. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Breed and Commissioners. It is my pleasure tonight to present an update and the preliminary recommendations for the Trails Master Plan. See if I can do this. That one right there. Perfect. As some of you remember, we introduced the San Ramon Trails Master Plan project to the Parks Commission at the May 14 meeting earlier this year. At that time, an overview of the project was presented that included the various components of the project, starting with a community needs assessment. Since then, multiple surveys have been conducted. Meetings were held with partner agencies. A public meeting was held with multiple in-person field and with multiple in-person field assessments have been conducted by the Design Workshop staff. These efforts, and that really means he went mountain biking or running, having fun out on the trails. These efforts and findings are referenced in the first 49 pages of the draft document. And for it's really for reference, it's the buildup to the preliminary recommendations of your packets, which are Attachment A. I do apologize for the original packets, the fonts, the lettering. We tried to get you to guess as to which letters were supposed to be where. That issue was corrected online, as well as I believe at this point, you all have received clear, clean copies. So hopefully, in the future, we won't have this issue, and we'll make sure the packets are appropriate the first time around. However, tonight, Ben Fish with Design Workshop, who is serving as the project lead, will be walking us through the themes and the preliminary recommendations developed through the community needs assessment portion of the project. At the end of the presentation, as Commissioner Breed mentioned, we would like your feedback on the preliminary recommendations of the draft master plan document, specifically pages 60 through 83 of your packet. That's the actual pages or packet numbers, 60 through 83. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Ben to review the project and the preliminary recommendations.
Great. Thanks, Keith. Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Fish. I'm a landscape architect with Design Workshop. I have over 25 years of experience as a landscape architect, focusing a lot on parks, trails, and recreation projects, and very honored to be working on this one in San Ramon. I was disappointed not to be able to bring my bike today because it was too wet. But we have done a lot of site reconnaissance, our team, and yeah, we're excited to show these preliminary recommendations. And I'm going to flip back and forth between the PDF and the online story map. Has everybody seen the online story map that gets more of an interactive map with the recommendations? Okay, great. So the presentation outlined tonight, we're going to go over the overall recommendation summary. Again, like Keith said, focusing on these recommendations. The five focus areas of those are neighborhood connections, external connections, improvements within the Iron Horse Trail, existing trail network enhancements, and trailheads and navigations. And then we're also going to end with next steps on the project. So like Keith said, we've been doing very robust feedback from stakeholders, external agencies, adjacent cities, extensive community outreach, and then our professional experience at Design Workshop and in-depth reviews of relevant planning efforts as well. There's a section below the recommendations in the draft document where you'll see where the recommendations align with previous planning efforts as well. And with that, right now, we have preliminary recommendation refinement. And what we're going to do from there is then develop actual trail alignments and prioritization of these plans based on your feedback tonight. This is an overview citywide of nearly 35 recommendations that we have in the draft document right now. I'm going to switch after this slide to the online story map, and we'll go to that. I think we'll hold questions right to the end. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And we have some general recommendations that are not mapped, so that we've heard from stakeholders and community. Dirt-to-dirt trail connections, for instance, right? A connected network that doesn't necessarily bring people onto roads or pavement, less stress from vehicles, utilizing all the open space that you have within the city of San Ramon, and then adjacent open space. You can see the green areas in here are East Bay Regional Parks, existing land holdings, and they have more land actually adjacent to city limits as well. The orange in here is GAD District, open space within city, and then there's other city parks as well. Looking at how there's ways to manage grazing and the open space management, with that too, potential to amend the GAD Land Conservation easements is a general recommendation. Implement a wayfinding and signage plan citywide. Look at easements to provide connections through linear corridors. Hierarchy of trailheads. So recognizing that every trailhead doesn't necessarily have to have parking to it. There could just be a neighborhood access point, and others where you can utilize an existing city park that has amenities and parking. And then also the potential to create a friends of or support a friends of group for maintenance and volunteer activities. With that, I'm going to switch to the story map. And the URL is on the upper right of these slides, too, for anybody that wants to follow along, you know, interactive story map yourself. And these story map websites are something that we've been building, and we use these. They're public facing. We find these to be incredibly helpful, much more so than a static PDF. So this explains the project. Critical success factors of it. Our trail system assessment. So again, if you haven't seen this, you'll see that there's ways you can click in here with our assessment maps. There's little arrows to the left and right. We also have a summary of what we've heard so far in here. And again, you can use the arrows left and right to see some actual community feedback, stakeholder feedback, external agency feedback. Again, a bit more dynamic than the document. And then this is what we want to get to tonight, though, is the preliminary recommendations themselves. Oh, yeah, good. Keith just mentioned, this is something that our Design Workshop team has partnered with the city on. So the city has co-ownership of this website, and it's not something that you necessarily have to pay a subscription to. It is ongoing and can be updated by city staff beyond the life of the project. Yeah.
Ben, can you do me a favor? Push the microphone toward you a little bit, because I know people online are listening. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
I need it to be taller, too.
We'll give a taller one. Thank you.
Okay. So again, the five focus areas that we have within the preliminary recommendations, I'm going to go through these and just pick out some highlights from each of the focus areas. I'm not going to go through each 35 geo-referenced recommendations independently right now, but we can take some questions if there are specific ones. So the first one, create connections between neighborhoods and open spaces. Sorry, this mouse is. And with this, we have two generalized recommendations here. One is up by the preserve. So you can see Recommendation A1, provide a new stacked loop trail system from the preserve to Lost Trumpus Regional Preserve. And in community feedback, Lost Trumpus is one of the most popular areas outside of the city for hiking and access to open space and trail systems. And what's pretty interesting you'll see in one of the other recommendations here is in meetings that we've had with East Bay Regional Parks, they're planning a new trail connection. You can see this existing trail just kind of dead ends just south of city limits. So in 2026, East Bay Regional Parks is playing a trail connector here to the preserve, opportunity for the city to partner there and provide a really easy win on this connection. Opportunity A2, work with HOAs. So that one's kind of region-wide. It's not mapped right now. The second focus area is partnerships to enhance regional connectivity. So we have 12 map geo-referenced map recommendations here. I'll hit a couple of the highlights. Again, this one up to Lost Trumpus, very crucial connection B1 that we're proposing right here is very important. B4 is a very interesting one. It's a new Boreal Agricultural Park by East Bay Regional Park District that they are working on currently for opportunity. This is near the Costco in San Ramon to provide a connection to that new park that's being provided right there. B4, I'm sorry, that's the one I just went through. Another very interesting one is B7 down at the southeast corner. And so this is one by the Tassahara Ridge staging area that will provide a connection directly to Camp Parks. And again, this is a project already that's in works with East Bay Regional Parks and an opportunity for the city to partner with them for this this really great connection, you know, down south. And then in that same area, we have B8, which is at Old Ranch Park. And this one is to provide a trail connection from Old Ranch Park to Dublin. You know, being sensitive not to the view set, we recognize there's some neighbors in that area, and there's some great topography in those hills, provide a connection to city of Dublin in the open space. This is all city-owned open space. There's no GAD overlay to it as well, which will make this easier. And there's also some user trails that go down to the senior center in that area and provide that connection to the senior center as well. Again, a very kind of easy win for the community that's been desired as well. Moving along, enhancement to the Iron Horse Trail. In surveys, this came up as the number one community desired enhancement, if you will, to the trail system. This provides a nice north-south trail corridor, but there's not a lot of shade along San Ramon section of the Iron Horse Trail. So there is opportunities in working. We've had meetings with the school district, with County, and with East Bay Regional Parks, who manage the Iron Horse Trail, to provide shade structures and maybe some new plantings in key areas that don't conflict with utilities. Then also improve connections to other parks and access points along the Iron Horse Trail, and also the potential to widen the trail in places. It's, I think, the easement that East Bay Regional Parks is only 10 feet right now, and that aligns with some previous planning efforts that they have to widen that for multi-use. Fourth focus area is enhance existing trails within city limits. And so these ones, two key ones are provide a stacked loop system within Tassahara Ridge that you see here in this photo, D3. So there's really just trails that follow old ranch farming roads right now in D3 and Tassahara Ridge, provide opportunity to provide smaller loops and maybe even some larger loops for community members. There's a lot of people that use that for exercise and access to the nice rolling hills there. Similarly, in the center of the town or city is Doherty Ridge. And again, same thing, utilizing some of the open space there and providing better connections and stacked loop trails within Doherty Hills. And finally, the fifth focus area, like we were saying, trailheads, navigation, so access points, and utilizing existing parks, access points from neighborhoods, and new trailheads themselves. One new trailhead that's been recognized is T2, the Crow Canyon Staging Area. I believe this is already on the CIP list, and provide connections to West Alamo Creek Trail from there. And then we have a few others on the west side of town. And then another one that's really interesting is from Forest Home Farms and provide an east-west connection to the Starkweather Trail. And so as a high level, that's a few of the high points of the recommendations with the plan. And sorry. Now I'm going to jump back to the PDF. And again, in the document, these are all summarized. And again, this is the common themes within San Ramon with the previous plan alignments. And just a reminder of those previous plans that we have in the document itself. And then this is the overall summary that we have that's also shown in the story map. And then our next steps are to develop the project prioritization criteria, create an action plan, identify potential funding strategies for these recommendations, develop trail construction and maintenance standards, and then identify the specific alignments within the plan. And then I believe we come back to commission for approval. Okay. And I'll head it back to Keith. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. As mentioned, the next steps for this project will be to take the feedback we received this evening and use it to refine and expand on the details within each of the preliminary recommendations. Once that work is complete in early 2026, we'll return to the Parks Commission with the final version of the Trails Master Plan for your review and approval. I know that we've already received a few questions, so with Chair Breed's permission, I'd like to address some of those now, if possible.
Yeah, I mean, yes, from a process standpoint, questions first. So if you can read the question, what you got, and then your answer, that'd be great.
Perfect. So one of the questions was, how do we make the summary page more readable? It's what you saw tonight is very compact. And so we will be looking at the current Parks Master Plan, how that's laid out. Can icons be used to help separate out versus just colors? And so obviously, that is more of a layout formality than it is anything else. Also mentioned, were we going to get timelines and prioritization of the goals? And that is, that is confirmed, yes, we will be getting that. And that will be, again, very similar to the Parks Master Plan. They'll have overall timing of it, five, 10 years, short term, long term, as well as hyper priority, medium, and low priority. There was a question about what is the Friends of Group? Like, what is that? And that is simply a a generalized term that will allow the city to partner with either internal or external groups to to achieve the goals within the document. That could be partnering with Save Mount Diablo Trail Dogs. They do maintenance out on trails. It could be something like that. It could be an internal committee of the city to do X, Y, or Z. So that Friends of Group is simply a general statement, so we don't limit ourselves or limit our brainstorming when we get to that stage of achieving goals. And then lastly, the, the plan is, who is going to manage the plan? Very similar to the Parks Master Plan. It will be managed by city staff. It will be our task to regularly complete the goals, report back to commission, report back to city council as to what's being achieved, what's not being achieved, what are the roadblocks being being encountered. And so those were just some of the, those were the questions that we had received ahead of time from one of, one of our commissioners. And I felt like it was important to, to address in case that answered any of yours. So at this time, though, we'd appreciate your feedback and your questions on the preliminary recommendations of the draft master plan. With that, I will.
Let me see if I have any speakers in queue. I don't know if it's working, but if anyone, please hit your queue and we'll see if it's working. Okay, I see no, no, no questions. Anyone have any questions? Okay. No questions. So all right, I have a couple of questions for you, Keith, because none of the commissioners are still right now. So can you explain GAD? I got so confused on the recommendation on the GAD trail, like recommended amend GAD land conservation elements. I don't understand that. So.
So there is a, sorry, there's a large portion of the eastern side of the city that falls under GAD, Geological Hazard Abatement District. Those individuals that live out in that area pay into the district to manage any geological hazards such as landslides. That body or that land is managed by, it's, well, there is a Northwest GAD and then the Doarty Valley GAD. And that is managed by a city staff member in Public Works. And their board is members of the city council. And so they manage the GAD property. That property that was handed over to the city has other conservation easements on it when we received it from the county after the houses were built. Does that make sense?
Okay, I'm tracking. I do paint of the GAD, by the way, for record. So I knew, I kind of knew that. I didn't know what, so we have to get permission because it sounded like we want to get on GAD property for the trails.
So, so we have a trail, we, we do have trail easements already in the GAD. That would be our current trail system. So for instance, like Tassahara Trail, we have roughly a twenty or thirty-foot center trail easement to have that trail. And it basically follows the current ranch, ranch road, right? If we want to do anything off, outside of that easement, we will need to go to the conservation easement holders and work with them to expand that.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thanks, Keith. I was struggling to understand what, who, who was the owner that we had to talk to on that. Okay, and then I read like some, since you gave me the whole packet, I read it twice. Who is, we, there was a recommendation on trash, right, that the community wanted more trash receptacles on there. And I didn't see it in the recommendation, and I might have missed it blown out as, as the next step. So are we capturing that feedback that you guys got from the survey from people?
You're right, it was not mentioned. I mean, it would probably follow or fall under one of those trail amenities. And we do have a maintenance aspect of the plan that will be developed. And so that, obviously, as you mentioned, Ben's making notes right now, making sure trash cans are noted. And we do have, Public Works does have a Trails Amenities CIP that does cover all of those types of things, benches, trash cans, recycling bins, poop, dog poop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I just want to make sure we call it out in the plan because you got a lot of comments in the, from the community. Okay, and then he, on the, on the, on the shade on the Iron Horse Trail, that's part of our master plan now, right? I mean, okay, I just want to make sure we're not duplicating effort.
Well, yes, we are duplicating, but it's, it's the cross-referencing. You can see from Ben's presentation, we are duplicating like eight different plans, cross-referencing them to make sure everybody knows that this plan aligns with eight different documents. And that's why we, there is a strong, there should be strong support because these other entities support these concepts. So there is duplication. And it does call it out because there are different revenue streams. It may not come from the Parks Department money to fund something. It may come from another Trails opportunity.
I got it. Okay, because I wonder why we did it. Thank you, Keith. And then two more. We talked a lot about staging areas and I got confused on staging areas. So can you explain what we're asking for in staging areas? Because I think it deals with parking in neighborhoods and such. So can we explain, I don't understand what the recommendation is on staging areas as I read through it.
So, so the staging area, we, we have one, Tassahara Staging Area, right? It's at that particular location, we have parking and the ability for a horse trailer to pull in. We have another CIP for a Crow Canyon staging area, right off of Crow Canyon across from the service center. That could potentially provide access south to West Alamo Creek or to the Sycamore Regional Preserve. That are larger. No one's really defined what a staging area is.
Got it.
Design Workshop is taking trailheads and those will be, there will be a hierarchy. Some will have parking, some will just be enhanced. It may have a trash can. It may have a map there. It may have water installed. So there will be a hierarchy of what those look like.
Okay, that's helpful. I didn't understand it. Okay, and then the last one, I think we have a great relationship with East Bay Parks and it keeps, keeps, we keep calling out that we need a strong relationship with East Bay Parks. One, I don't know how you measure that. And two, I'm not sure why we'd call that out, but why do we keep putting that in? That we want to have a good relationship or strong relationship with East Bay Parks in these reports?
I would say we're calling out that we want strong relationships with a lot of external agencies, whether that's East Bay Regional Parks, Dublin, Danville, the county, because we will need to have that relationship and a strong working relationship to accomplish a lot of the goals that we are actually listing out. And so I think that's the intent.
I got it. Okay, cool. That's all I got. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Keith. Okay, any public comment? Oh, sorry, did you, the question?
Did now, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I, I asked you guys and jumped in. Okay, Kyle, Kyle, sorry, Commissioner Livy has a question. Sorry, Kathy.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair Breed. And thank you, Keith, for the great presentation. I can only imagine how aligning all these various documents, how difficult just that work can be to kind of make sure it all lines up and is consistent with one another. So I did have a couple of questions related to the potential challenges we might face with having to deal with external stakeholders in some of this. As a general rule, would it be fair to say that if money was no object, it's still easier to pursue the enhancements that are for the trail infrastructure that's already within city property on city limits, things like that, if we don't have to go to anyone else externally as a general rule, that's fair to say? Okay. So since a lot of the items in here do depend on dealing with external stakeholders, have, have there any of those conversations even started yet? Do you have any kind of like read on how agreeable some of them might be to some of these proposals?
Yeah, there, as Ben mentioned, we have had conversations with actually all of the let me rephrase that, with East Bay Regional Parks, Danville, Dublin, the county, and the school district. East Bay Regional Parks, we actually had a meeting, we ran through all of the recommendations that involve them, and they are on board. There is not necessarily a timeline that they can commit to, but they are all within their scope and that they understand that they would enhance our trails as well as theirs. We have spoken to Dublin. They have zero concerns and actually like the idea of connecting our open space to their open space. It simply just adds benefits to everybody. And speaking with Danville, they have a very small piece of the pie, but there was no hesitation there either. We really would be either potentially connecting to the new park that East Bay really, each, East Bay Regional Park is developing, Sycamore Open Space, or up towards Mustang Soccer. So the impact on the town of Danville is relatively small, but there was no pushback. And then with the county, and that's really county and East Bay Regional Parks is Iron Horse Trail. And so, and there are actually other players involved in that that are going to have to be on the same page before anything really happens there. But with the school district, they have agreed when the time is appropriate, they are willing to help us out with planting trees on their property that could potentially grow and, you know, and help provide shade. So there are a number. No, the recommendations that you do see have all been vetted with external agencies and they all have loosely agreed to, you know, them in concept at least.
Okay. I kind of figured as much because you don't get that far in a document this complex without having those conversations and giving at least those stakeholders a heads up or feeling their temperature, but I just kind of wanted to establish that. So that's good. For the items related to HOAs, has that also been the case where those HOAs have been approached? I know in the, in the packet you, there's some justification that some of this can be a win-win for them. It can be, make their communities more, you know, attractive because of the amenity that this trail access will provide. But have those conversations happened yet?
We have reached out to them. And as of right now, none of them have replied to any of our surveys or emails. However, a number of years ago, we did reach out to one that backed up to Doarty, Doarty Ridge Trail. I won't mention which one at this point because the board has turned over and it was a number of years ago now. They were actually, they pointed out a, a, a location within their neighborhood that potentially could become an access point up to the ridge. So we know that the conversations can happen, but yes, we would strategically and have those. And obviously not force anything because their members are going to have to agree to it before we push, you know, a project.
That, that kind of addresses another concern I had was that if the HOAs are involved, that it is, you know, with their permission and consent.
Absolutely. Yeah, it would, it would absolutely have to be.
Okay.
Because it, it would be their land that we would want to help improve.
Okay. Good. I think the only other question which I had, which I think Chair Breed touched on is for the Iron Horse Trail. The amenities that would be within the sections of the trail within city limits, those would still need the cooperation of East Bay Regional Parks to approve.
Yes.
Permission. Okay, so there could be, you know, some potential maneuvering that has to happen there to make those happen.
Correct.
Okay. In fact, there would be. It's not, it's not a matter of could.
Right.
Okay. All right. I think that kind of answers the preliminary, preliminary questions I had.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Livy. Commissioner Mitra.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
So Keith, I think the question I had is already been answered. So it is my question was related to how do I, how, how are we collaborating more than last year compared to the other last year with the external agencies, like, you know, East Bay Regional Park, Dublin, Danville? We, we had the exact same conversation last year. So just wanted to know, have we improved on that, any of the things? Have any of the issues that we were facing last year has been resolved and things like that? Any kind of progress on that? I already touched on that because to answer Commissioner Livy's question, but just say anything else to add to there.
I mean, I think the, the, the one thing to just expand on is with the preliminary recommendations and already vetting them with the external agencies, the fact that we are having those conversations and getting on the same page, so that once we have an approved document, we can now go back with the prioritization and see who's, who's ready to move forward. Obviously, those working relationships and those doors are, are remaining open, those lines of communication are remaining open. So I'm not so, so sure it's improving as into using those lines of communication and using those connections to actually complete a project or complete a goal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As long as there is alignment, that hits a win-win.
Correct.
It's a community thing that both the communities can improve and win at the same time. I think there is a, there isn't, when, as long as we have that kind of alignment, I think that is a good way to go from there. So would you call at this point, there is no situation with any of the external agencies or cities that we have a deadlock situation? No, right?
No. I mean, the conversations right now are high level and conceptual. So there's, there's, no, no, no details are able to be, you know, deadlocked at this point.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Mitra. Commissioner Koenig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Nice job, Keith. I thought we were gonna be here till nine o'clock watching, but because this report is so dense and immense. So thank you for, for keeping it understandable, decipherable, and condensed. Appreciate that. Quick question about, you mentioned widening of the Iron Horse Trail, because I, I, I didn't see that in the plan per se. Are there any details around that, like specific locations or maybe how many square miles or?
It's in the county's plan that we have, we have in here, previous alignment. Sorry, it's one of those documents on the right inside there. But we do have it in the details of the previous plan alignment. There isn't necessarily specifically where it's exactly going to be widened in the plan right now. There are sections, you know, for instance, by Central Park, that, that, that could be, that, that could happen.
Yeah.
There is a big utility corridor, too, that would need to go around.
Yeah, I think just going up and down the trail, you probably have a sense of where widening could happen. And at some point, I assume that that would come before this commission, too, and there's more details in regards to that. Okay, thank you.
But in line with the county's plan and.
Got it, got it. Okay. And then the other question I had was, oh, and Chair Breed touched on this, but like the, the walking district master plan, is there intentionality to really kind of marry these two in particular?
This plan more focused on the trails and how those trails could be expanded or enhanced. There will be obviously connections from the Iron Horse Trail through the Bishop Ranch properties that would lead to the walking district. And the walking district plan is also in here and is cross-referenced. So there is alignment, but it's not necessarily enhancing the walking district. It may connect it, but not much more than that at this point.
Got it, okay. And I asked just because, you know, I just hear a lot in the community lately, in particular, when we're talking about a lot of the new housing that's going in, particularly in the city core area. People just using terms like lack of planning and things like that. And I just think as much as we can sort of hear those concerns and lean into that as much as we can with some of these documents that we have to reassure our community that, you know, we, we've got a vision for this. Yeah, just a comment, but thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shetty.
Good chat.
Thank you.
Third question on that G7, the Friends of the Group, partnering with Friends of Group. How that works? Is it just for the cleanup or the?
I, I think it's referenced as for maintenance and, and trail cleanup, but it really could be partnering to enhance trails. And that could really be, like I mentioned, Save Mount Diablo Trail Dogs, it's a volunteer portion of their nonprofit that actually volunteers throughout the Bay Area to enhance or cut trails. So we could potentially partner with them. That would be an, an agreement or a partnership outside, obviously, of the, the master plan document. But that could really be with service groups in San Ramon. It could be with the Boy Scouts. It could be a, a number of the bike, bike clubs or running clubs to help maintain so that the financial burden of maintaining the trails is not necessarily. To help maintain, um, so that the financial burden of maintaining the trails is not necessarily solely on the shoulders of the city.
I see. And currently we don't have a partnership like that.
We do not.
Thank you.
Okay. I see. Um, hey Keith, can I ask you one other question? I apologize. Did we have a partnership with a outside agency to do trailhead signs? I thought that came to us.
We do.
Like three.
Yes, we do.
And where is that?
Smart Outdoor. Uh, they are confident that they will be finding a sponsor. Their, uh, five-year contract ends in 20, in like February of 2027. They still, uh, have a marketing firm. They actually have two marketing firms working to, to finalize, um, a, a large sponsorship. We have discussed it. I speak with them, hmm, once a month, every six weeks. They, it's, they, you can't divulge, they don't divulge much on the sole sponsorship discussions, but they have been really close and are still feel close on landing a medical sponsorship. Meaning a, a local hospital of some sort, um, that would end up on the trail signs. Uh, I have suggested, and we have taken it to their marketing firms, um, that are seeking the sponsorships to actually split the project up from trailhead signs, access signs to, uh, you know, the four foot posts that we put in the ground. And at that time, that was probably now a few months ago, uh, they said, no, please don't make us do that. We are still confident in moving forward. Like we are going to make this deal happen.
Okay.
So yeah, that, that is the status. Uh, we still are pushing forward with, they are currently working on a, um, San Ramon specific, uh, mobile app, um, that they've already, or they would be in launching in conjunction with a city in New York as well. And then from there it would expand. Um, that should be happening. I'm going to estimate in the first six months of next year. And then, so they are still moving forward with, with the things that they have discussed and, and, and that mobile app would, uh, help generate funds for the trails.
Gotcha. Thank you, Keith. I, I knew we were doing that. Thank you.
We are.
It will help with some of this stuff in here. Okay. Kathy, any, um, public comment? Thanks again, Keith.
We do. Angie Kangas, please.
Hi. Welcome. You, you give me one second, please. Do you wanna put the timer up? Thank you so much. Sorry, Angie.
Should be quick.
Go ahead.
I have done the Trails Challenge, which I love. My husband and I have fallen, fallen in love with the whole trail system. We're so lucky to live in San Ramon and have that available in our backyard. There were two things that I was hoping to hear today that I might've missed, or maybe you've talked about it before. One, the trails, some of them are really hard to locate because the signage is so poor and they're kind of hidden. Um, and two, once you're on the trail, it's really hard to navigate. So it's hard to figure out where the trail is, where it ends, where it begins, because a lot of them will splinter off. So I'm wondering if those two things are addressed in the Trails Master Plan. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Is there, um, any other public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Okay. So now we're going to take comments from, uh, the commissioners on the, on, on the, uh, final comments and feedback that they're asked for. So we'll, if you'd like to comment or speak, please touch online. Any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Levy? Vice Chair Levy, I'm sorry.
Ah, it's all right. No, I, I think again, this is a very impressive, uh, document and, uh, reflects a huge amount of work and a huge amount of thought to align it with all of our other existing, um, plans and make sure that they're all cohesive. In terms of priorities, cause I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that is something that staff is looking for, some direction from the commission about what should be prioritized. I do think it makes sense to prioritize, um, uh, improvements to the trail infrastructure that's already within city property, within the, uh, city limits. You know, that could come with, you know, financial, uh, complications, which aren't our concern tonight, but it's easier than, you know, inter-agency coordination. Not that, you know, it's going to be difficult to coordinate with some of these other stakeholders, but, you know, I, I think we all know that, uh, even when well-intentioned coordination between agencies happens, uh, there's just, there's so many more layers of review and, and pitfalls along the way, and the timeline could be really dragged out. Whereas if we focus on, um, the infrastructure within this, the city, the trail infrastructure in the city, we can actually start to see results for this plan, um, in a more timely manner. And then use those results as a selling point to get some of these more external things, uh, you know, over the finish line. So that's kind of where I'm leaning in terms of priorities, but I'm open to discussion from the rest of the commission.
Okay. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Levy. Commissioner Mitra?
No, thank you, Chair. Um, so Keith, it's an amazing report. Every year you guys produce and thank you. Thank you for our design team as well. So without it, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to the public comment, if you have any, if you have any, if you don't, you can always get back to that. But since I just rather than me giving a comment, I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that, to points that are brought up in the public comments.
Perfect. And, and yes, that the, the Trails Master Plan does address, uh, signage, um, from the, uh, from the recommendation of installing a wayfinding signs. That would be part of helping the residents navigate the trails. In addition, uh, talking about smart outdoor and doing the mobile app, that also will help. But if you want to get rid of your phone, uh, while you're out there, the, the signs are the way to go. And yes, that is part of the plan and part of something that's the city is currently working on.
You good? Yeah, that took, that took one of mine. I appreciate it. Any other comment from the commissioners? Okay, Keith, I have a couple of comments if I could. First of all, hey, nice job. I know this is a lot of work for you and Ben. So, um, and the detail on there is pretty phenomenal. Uh, so I really appreciate the work. I will tell you that I was super pleased that we're still trying to get, uh, feedback I saw coming on a trail this weekend. It took, I was going to send this to Henry, or sorry, Director Perizzano of the, how we're still trying to get feedback from the community. So, uh, I want to applaud the staff for working hard and putting random signs on trails that I'm on to do that. So I thought that was pretty cool. Hey, um, the other thing is for me, this is a pretty encompassed report. So I'm trying to think the end user and how do we make it simple? We talked about prioritizing toward the master plan, but it'd be super helpful as we identify those items that would be CIP driven. To kind of put, is it expensive? Is it super expensive? To try and give the reader, the end readers, as we're prioritizing, cause obviously, you know, we're pretty tight, we're budget's pretty challenging right about now, but if we, as a city looks and says, hey, what, we do have money, what's fits in this price range? And I know prices change over the year, but at least there's a, at this time in our history, this is what we think is expensive, medium, high, low, right? So that way as we're trying to pick it, the other thing is you mentioned about who the owner is. I gotta tell you for me, I like to have a staff member called out who's the owner of the, I mean, a role, not a person that would own the Trail Master Plan. So that way if the community or anybody asks questions, we have a specific owner within staff that has a, title, and I know titles change, but at this time, right? So that would be super helpful. Uh, that way, um, you know, with someone super accountable on that. Those are kind of the big ones. Um, I think this is super good and I'm super excited about it, but I will say, I, I, the last one is, do we work with planning on, I guess I should ask this as a question, so you can kind of take the question, but as we, as there, as the planning commission looks at, you know, new developments, do we share with them, do they consider the Trail Master Plan as they're trying to say, hey, how do we, cause it ties into what Terry said, or sorry, Commissioner Koenig said about the city walk? How do we tie that in? So I guess my recommendation would be, how do we make this usable easier for the planning department? So as we're looking at developments, we can, you know, tie trails in to make a better walking plan for the city. So I thought it's good build. So thank you so much. And, uh, did we give you the feedback that you're looking for? Is there any other help you need from us?
I think as of right now, I think we're good. Ben, is there anything? He's got a page of notes, so I think he's, he's good. And, and like we said earlier, we're just going to take tonight, we're going to go back, we're going to look at what, what was said and, and dive into the details of those recommendations now.
Okay. So there's no other help you need from us? Okay. Which is super helpful. Okay. We can't thank you enough for your time, both of you for coming tonight and answering our questions. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, let me just kind of organize myself really quick. We are headed to co-sponsor group. So, um, uh, Keith, I think you are still up, by the way, right?
Yeah. Okay. I, I can go ahead and kind of give, give him the breather that he needs.
Yeah. Let me just kind of introduce it really quick, Henry, and then I'll, I'm sorry, Director Perizzano, and I will, um, just hand it over to you. Hey, um, just for the commission, uh, staff recommends that the parks and community service commission receive, provide direction and approve the revisions to the co-sponsor policy. Commissioner Perizzano.
Thank you and, and good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This really, I would just reutilize that same recommendation and kind of, uh, break it down a little bit. So really what we're asking for the, from the commission today is to take a look at the revised, uh, document. We know that we gave you a lot of background information. We gave you the 2018 report and all the presentations that came about that, which was, you know, as we know right now, dated information. But we wanted to make sure that you had a chance to look at the new revised document, which was really looking at a different flow, some grammatical things and some, uh, other, other poignant things that, uh, items that will be, uh, shared by Keith here in a second. But really when we look at providing direction, what we're asking for, is there anything that's missing? Or is there any clarification that needs to be within the body of the, of the policy that will help us to kind of approve it and move forward? Again, and this document is intended not to, not only help staff, you know, as we decide and hope who, recognize who would be a co-sponsored group, but also for those co-sponsored groups to have a place to go back to and look at and say, this is, this is the direction, this is the information that I need to become a co-sponsored and to continue to act as such. So again, today's topic is the actual policy and the revisions that we're looking into that. And that's where we'll, we'll hand it over to Keith to, uh, present for you.
All right. Thank you so much. Keith, thanks. You're up again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you again for this opportunity. This is actually, uh, a really, uh, amazing, uh, policy that the city has and that we are able to, um, that I'm able to present the updates for the city's 2026, uh, co-sponsorship policy. This policy plays a, a vital role in how the city supports the community-based sports and recreation programs in San Ramon. It is the, it is the bible of how we deal and how we come about with these partnerships. And we strategically plan, um, what those partnerships look like. Our goal, uh, for tonight is threefold. First, we're, I, I'd like to review the purpose and importance of the co-sponsorship and the associated policy. Second, highlight the key updates, um, and additions, uh, proposed in this year's revision. And keep in mind, they are proposed. So, uh, it's staff being a neutral party, thinking this is what's best for the city as well as the user groups. It's all proposed. Um, and finally request the permission, uh, the commission's direction and approval of the revised policy. Co-sponsorship is more than just the allocation of fields, pools, uh, pool space and gym time. Its goal is to ensure equitable, uh, uh, access to facilities supporting, uh, both established and emerging sports. This policy helps our department, um, and is designed to promote health and wellness through active recreation, strengthen the sense of community, uh, by bringing people together through shared experiences, ensuring inclusive participation, especially for youth in compliance with the Fair Play in Community Sports Act, uh, to protect and maintain our facilities for long-term sustainability. And finally, provide a pathway for emerging sports to grow and thrive in San Ramon. The coastal co-sponsorship policy guides city staff in having strategic partnerships with organizations that other, uh, that offer programs that the city does not, cannot offer due to required expertise, um, uh, that is needed. Or programs that the city simply, uh, elects not to offer, such as competitive year-round sports. The policy also helps to meet the goals outlined in the department's park master plan and city council priorities, which are identified in the staff report. Finally, as our community continues to grow and diversify, this policy ensures that our limited facility space is shared fairly and intentionally among a wide range of requests from our sports user groups. And while individually each user group's request may seem simple, when receiving requests from eight field user groups and five pool user groups, all wanting primetime space in the late afternoon and early evenings, uh, for example, those simple requests quickly become complex puzzles. Allocating space to our co-sponsored groups requires a cooperative and thoughtful process that carefully weighs several factors, such as recreation programs versus competitive programs, girls versus boys, youth versus adult use, in-season versus off-season training, new programs versus longstanding programs. As of the 2018 application process, when the commission was last presented the policy, the city had 16 co-sponsored groups across the fields, pools and gyms. These, uh, groups served roughly 7,300 participants. And as of the 2025 renewal process, there were 14 co-sponsored groups with roughly 6,000 total participants. While the overall number of co-sponsored groups has been, has reduced, the resident participation rate has actually increased from roughly 72 to 73% of those, um, involved in the co-sponsored, um, sports. And we've seen shift in group compositions with new sports like football and cheer, cricket and swim clubs gaining traction and becoming co-sponsored just in the last two years. The changes and additions presented tonight reflect the city's responsiveness and evolving community needs. I'd also like to mention that over the last, uh, nine years, the city has continued to invest in our infrastructure, our athletic infrastructure to meet the needs of the changing community. The installation of three cricket pitches, which is 50% of all of cricket pitches in the Tri-Valley. It should be noted effectively remove, uh, that these three pitches effectively removed six diamonds and a minimum of three soccer fields for daily rental use by existing co-sponsored groups, um, at the time. And one year ago today, tonight, we were up at Sunrise Ridge Park, celebrating the opening of a park, uh, that has synthetic, uh, fields that are lined for both soccer and lacrosse and a diamond that is now usable by both baseball and softball. All right. So, so moving on to the background of the co-sponsorship policy, uh, the, the policy itself, uh, was last comprehensively updated in 2018. At that time, the staff reviewed a five-page document, one of those pages being, uh, put your name on it if you were the applicant, um, and look at the rest of the information. So it was really four pages of information, um, that was established in the early nineties. And, and, and at that time, we redefined, in 2018, we redefined the goals of the co-sponsorship policy and addressed a number of issues as outlined in attachment A, which begins on page 105 of your packets. Because the policy was being completely overhauled at that time with the goals being, uh, uh, and updated requirements to be, uh, we brought it to the commissions, um, sorry, to the policy committee of the commission, as well as then brought a final document to the full commission, um, of, of June, uh, 2018. And we received a unanimous approval at that time. Since its approval, the policy has undergone regular reviews by staff to ensure the policy remained relevant and addressed the needs of both the co-sponsorship groups and the city. With the approval of the updated policy in 2018, it provided the Parks and Community Services Department with the ability to revise the standards, guidelines or procedures outlined in the policy. As such, there have been seven revisions of that policy document. Most of those updates were administrative in nature and addressed things such as adjusting insurance provisions, going from a one, two, uh, one million, two million insurance policy to a two, a two million, fourth, four million dollar, uh, insurance policy, updating air quality protocols and refining procedures for adding, changing or canceling permitted use. However, uh, there were two notable revisions early on. In fact, one of them came shortly after the commission approved, uh, the process or the new policy in 2018. The staff The staff had to, our staff included a minimum of a 100-person active participant for an agency or an organization to be eligible to apply for co-sponsorship. What we were finding is that we were getting inquiries from like 20 people groups, which then would have really compounded our scheduling efforts. And so we really wanted relationships and strategic partnerships with those that serve a good number of residents of the community and not maybe a pet project for a parent. So that, that was one additional requirement that we installed early on. And then in 2019, it was discovered we had a loophole that there was a user group that used it. And we closed that had allowed youth organizations to qualify under the California Fair Play Act, even if they primarily served non-residents. But because they served a large number of girls, the policy said we had to approve them. And so we did at that time and shortly thereafter, we obviously closed the loophole because the, the, the goal of the program or the policy is to serve the greatest number of residents and San Ramon-based employees. This year's review is more comprehensive. And while still largely administrative, it includes a broader evaluation of the policy's structure and flow, input from co-sponsored groups and a legal review by the city attorney's office. For these reasons, we felt, staff felt it necessary to present the updated policy to the parks commission tonight. Overall though, the intent and direction of the policy remains unchanged, but the updates do make it more detailed and further address the evolving recreational landscape in San Ramon. This year's policy update includes several important revisions that collectively improve the policy's clarity and alignment with community needs. A few of the key ones are outlined on, on your screen or in the presentation. The updated policy outlines the requirements for new applicants, co-sponsor renewals and annual reviews for the co-sponsored groups. This includes updated, some of these updates include documentation requirements such as annual proof of nonprofit status, which was actually a city attorney's recommendation, submitting any new bylaws, bylaw amendments, again, city attorney, and more in-depth descriptions of changes to their programs that may impact required amount of space to be allocated. Upon approval of the policy document, staff will create the necessary application cover sheet that groups will complete, will complete and submit with their required information. Several of the documents that they submit are simple PDFs and not necessarily part of an application. So really we just need a cover sheet that says this is where it's coming from. Again, one of the major revisions that we, we are proposing is the cancellation deadline for facility use be reduced from 30 days to 14 days, making it more realistic for the user groups to predict and manage changes, but still allows time for staff to process the changes before the actual date takes place. And a standardized add-drop forms has been introduced to streamline the process and help staff track the number of changes that are coming through so that we can keep track and make sure that we're not missing anything. The policy now also includes direct links to the city's website to access forms, scheduling timelines and other resources. This improves the accessibility of information to the user groups. And upon approval of the necessary information and documents will be uploaded to the city website so that it's all there for, for all of the groups to receive or for an interested organization to peruse and take a look at. And finally, the appeals process has been updated to reflect the city's municipal code. Having reviewed a few of the key revisions, I'd like to turn to the additions, so the highlighted additions that we are proposing. And these components that I'm going to outline help strengthen the policy and reflect the city's commitment to equity, safety and long-term sustainability of our infrastructure. The policy now includes updated criteria for both youth and adult organizations. It outlines the need for any new organization applying for co-sponsorship to be established for a minimum of three years to ensure that the city is partnering with well-established groups and not a splinter faction off of an existing group by angry parents. Again, we want existing, stable organizations. Staff is also proposing a reestablish, to reestablish a requirement for all future organizations applying to provide, applying to provide a different or enhanced level of service that is currently not provided by the city or an existing co-sponsored group. This would be determined by the PCS staff or in the current policy is referred to as the co-sponsorship committee. Sounded a little too formal for me, so I just call a staff now. Through a review of the organization's application and if necessary, a meeting with the applying group to understand what they're really offering. To complement the eligibility requirements, a new pathway has been created for emerging sports that, that are growing in popularity, but may not, may not yet meet all of the traditional eligibility, eligibility criteria. The path supports innovation and inclusivity in San Ramon's recreational offerings. Sports such as beach volleyball, girls' flag football or rugby may fit into this category. Through the application and review process, groups meeting the necessary requirements would be eligible for a tier-two co-sponsorship as outlined in the policy document. Co-sponsored groups may now also propose, propose larger-scale facility enhancements, enhancement projects, which are funded or partially funded by one or more co-sponsored groups. Examples of these types of projects could be additional field lights, enhanced scoreboards or batting cages or permanent batting cages, I guess I should say. These types of projects would be reviewed internally by various city departments, PCS, Public Works, Planning and would entail, or I guess it would be Engineering, sorry, and entail agreements established outside of the co-sponsorship policy. To meet the needs of each co-sponsored group financially, the policy now allows or is proposing to allow groups to request individualized payment plans. These plans must be arranged, are being proposed to be arranged at least seven weeks in advance of a use period starting and requires an initial 50%, basically down payment of the overall cost for their permits and then with regular due dates, agreed-upon due dates. The policy also now includes detailed scheduling timelines for each facility type, fields, gyms and pools. Staff found that the traditional quarter system did not necessarily work for the gyms and pools. So the gyms are now going to a six-month cycle where the pools are following the high school swimming and water polo seasons. Cause those, the, the, the high school use drives what else can happen during those times of year. It also outlines the scheduling process, starting at 11 weeks before a use period starts, which will help everybody be on the same page. It'll help staff stay on target and will help the, the user groups understand the next step in the process. And finally, it's proposed all youth organizations now submit documentation showing how they comply with federal, state and local safety standards. This includes, but not limited to, background checks, concussion protocol training and sexual abuse and molestation or SAM's insurance coverage. Groups should already be meeting or exceeding these requirements. As they work with youth already, the city is simply asking for details as to how their organizations meet the requirements. While the 2026 policy update includes several revisions and additions, the core goals of the co-sponsorship policy remain unchanged. We, to ensure inclusive and equitable access to facilities, to prioritize San Ramon residents and San Ramon-based employees, to protect and enhance the city's infrastructure and to support organizations that provide services the city does not. These goals continue to guide how the city strategically partners with the community organizations and allocate access to public facilities. The updates presented tonight are the result of a collaborative input from user groups, legal counsel and city staff. Staff believe these updates are a reflection of the commitment to our community partnerships and to the entire San Ramon community. If approved this evening, staff will incorporate feedback from the commission, share the updated policy with the current co-sponsored groups, post the final version on the website, at city website and begin the implementation for the 2026 calendar year, which includes collecting all annual renewal information from each of the co-sponsored groups. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or receive your feedback this evening.
Okay. Thank you so much, Keith. Appreciate it. So what we'll do now is I will see if there's any speaker is in line while Keith gets a drink of water. So, and then Keith, we'll have some questions. Okay. So I'll let everyone queue up. Keith, thanks again for the report and all the work behind that. So first speaker is Commissioner Cunnick. Questions?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And, and Keith, thank you.
Thank you.
Minor, super duper basic questions. So an example of a, a co-sponsor would be like San Ramon Soccer Club, Little League, San Ramon Little League.
Correct.
Right? Okay. CYO.
Yeah.
Those types of groups. Okay. What, what, what is the actual benefit to them? Is it, is it, they get precedent when it comes to field and gym use? They get first choice and?
Yeah. So they do get a number of benefits. They get priority scheduling based on the tier that they are, youth versus adult, tier one, tier two. They get access to the fields or to reserve the fields prior to any private organization or non-resident group. And they receive a discounted rental rate that is approved through the fee resolution process.
Got it. Okay. Do we have, do we have a limit on the number of co-sponsors? Is there a cap?
No.
We could allow? Okay.
There, there's, there's no cap on the number of co-sponsors. The, the cap would be the, the space, what we can accommodate, what the user, what the user groups collectively can agree to allow each group to use. That ultimately will play into how many are, are allowed.
Got it. I assume we want to balance, right, a balance between co-sponsorships and et cetera, general community access to fields and gyms and pools, right?
Yeah. So, so, so yes, I mean, the co-sponsored groups are able to rent. So I'll use the gyms. So we have a CYO group, but we still have drop-in basketball. We still have private rentals, the pool, same thing. We have co-sponsored swim teams. We have all of our in-house programming. We have rec swim, lap swim and we have a good number of private rental groups that, such as diving, that we want in the water as well. So there is still remains access.
And then, um, yeah, cause as a former, you know, basketball, baseball coach, I know field and gym use is like sacred space for sure. Do we know, is there, I, I really like the resident really leaning into that, that aspect of this. Is there a, is there, is there a certain percentage? I didn't see that in the report.
It's a group need 75%.
75 it is. Okay. Okay. I missed that. Thank you. And then, are, are there limitations on like frequency of usage? Or does that just depend on the sport season? It depends on the user group.
Right. So, so we take into an organization's like in-season, what is their main season? So for instance, the easiest ones off the top of my head are rec swim teams. Their true season is spring through end of summer in which they really get the priority, they get every, they get as much as we can offer them that they request, right? Outside of those windows, then they would be off-season training. And then the, the year-round swim teams would, they would potentially get the advantage precedence to, to get pool space first.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunnick. Commissioner Setti.
Thank you for the details. A couple of question. The, one of the new clause added that establish, the organization should be established for three years. What does that mean? Like establishment within our city or it can be established or registered outside the?
Yeah, just, just established. We, we want to see that they have been around, that they are doing business, that it's not a dad that started a softball team and, and as soon as their daughter's done, it's, it's going to go away. We want, we want someone that's a, a group that's going to serve the community long-term. If we're going to get in a partnership, we want this thing to last.
Yeah. Makes sense. And how frequently we monitor if any organization is assigned a tier-one status? Thank you for putting that approach at it so clear. If it meets the requirement, it becomes a tier-one league or club, right?
Right.
How frequently we go and check on them that?
So we check, we collect information annually from each group. At each, at each point of the, so when we check, we are collecting numbers, total numbers, residency, girls, so that we can at least go through that flow chart again and make sure that they're meeting. For instance, just because you're tier-one this year, right? So let's say I qualify tier-one this year. I've met all the requirements. I've got 75% residency. I even have 40, 48% girls. But 12 months from now, something happens. Kids decide to play a different sport that's, that from the, different than the organization that I run. Their residency or their numbers and their residency fall below 75% or their girls fall before, below 48%. We, the city staff would go back to that organization and say, okay, your numbers fell. This is what we're seeing. We're giving you 12 months to correct it until the next review process. Okay. At that point, if their numbers look good, they're in the clear, they stay tier-one. If not, then they would be looking at potentially a tier-two if they are the only organization offering that sport in town. Or there is potential to drop out all, altogether if they're not meeting the residency rate. So if they're serving a lot of non-residents and we're giving them field space or pool space and the majority of their users are now non-residents, that is not what the intention of this policy is.
Got it. And once they drop from tier-one to tier-two, we send the written communication to them or something. Okay. Now you're downgraded. That way it's very clear.
Yes. And if we are going to put them on probation for 12 months, that again would be a letter confirming that and they, so that they understand.
That way there's no dispute later.
Exactly.
Okay. I have a couple more question. I can wait. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. The girls' participation, either, I think the number it mentioned 101 is the minimum, which makes sense established. Or the girls' participation should be what? 48% or something?
Yes. The, the law or the act, the Fair Play Act states that the girls, boys ratio should reflect what's in the community. And so we actually use the San Ramon Valley Unified School District numbers that they, they split 52, 48, girls being the 48%. So that's how we got to that number.
So if we get 100 registration, 48 person need to be, 48.
They don't have to be, but that is, that
To meet that.
Potential qualifying factor. Yes.
Got it. Got it. One other thing I noticed, this is based on the email, you, you put the printout here, right? Based on the email, I was just going through the packet for the San Ramon Youth Cricket Club. The stats are shown incorrect in the, in our original packet because here it shows they had consistently, in the email, which I see in my desk here, it shows they had consistently 80, 83% is their lowest residency. Whereas I think I saw somewhere 64. Whereas I think I saw somewhere 64% we are showing. And also number of registration, registration showing 101, whereas they are showing 377 last year. Not a big deal, but since it's a printout, so I mentioned.
If I may, that 101 was from 2018. Those numbers were referenced from a 2018 presentation. And these other numbers are correct. I did cross-reference the last, the 2024 377. That is exactly what I would have told you this evening.
Got it. And one important thing, at least I believe we are, this is the feedback missing in the policies. What happened, one existing organization is there now, one more competing organization which qualifies comes and we have only limited capacity, right? Because space is limited. So when that happens, then obviously nobody wants to downsize. If I'm an existing organization, I don't, my first choice is I don't want to downsize, I want to grow, right? But at the same time, now I have to accommodate the second organization. So that if there is a dispute, how that can be resolved, that is not clear. Because what I'm afraid is it may become subjective. If that is mentioned in a little bit detail, okay, meeting will be called upon or X, Y, Z. I believe that will help.
Okay, and, and, and definitely understand that. And yes, there is a process. Our staff that's sitting up in the corner, they do work hand in hand with each of the, the cosponsor groups. They communicate, they say, hey, these are the issues, these are options. Speak with the other cosponsored groups potentially, if you guys can work it out. But we can put that into those steps.
Just to be transparent, yeah. And last question for now, this policy is supposed to be approved by commission today. It's applicable for the season which is starting in January or it's for the 2026?
So, so if we approve, we, I called it the 2026 because that's really what's coming ahead of us. We would start implementing right away, we start collecting the information. We would approve them for January 1 through December 31st. And moving forward, knowing that quarter one for the field starts January 1st. If there are revisions that have to be made next year, we would simply update it with, you know, the month and the year that we update it and then we would move forward with that.
I see, so if any applications are in progress right now, I think in the schedule wise, I saw between October, November, and it's communicated in December. It makes sense, January, new season start, so they're in process, so this will be applicable.
Exactly. If I may add one thing, Commissioner, there are no new applications for new cosponsor groups at this point. So that's really when we're looking at forward, this is for any new cosponsor group that wants to come in. It will also help us to, to work with the current cosponsor groups. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there's no new groups. We're still working off the, the current policy and moving forward with, you know, working with the current established groups.
Yeah, what I mean is, say, a baseball team is there established, one more team is made application this year and they want to, now they want to share the field.
Right, and that, and that's exact, so there are no other new groups outside of the groups that are currently, currently cosponsor groups. So there's no one in the works, we have not heard anything from anyone at this point. And if and when we do, they would probably be going under the new policy.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Seti. Mr. Lee, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Levy.
Oh, sure, no worries. Thanks Keith, it's a lot of information and a lot of details and nuance and I appreciate you condensing it as, and as straightforward a ways as you could. I want to ask a couple of questions, kind of zero in on, on what's being presented, what's being asked of us tonight. So just to be clear, what we're being asked to potentially approve tonight is the draft policy that starts, I think on page 155 of the packet and goes, sorry, and goes to one, was it? 85, is that about right?
That is correct.
Okay, that's great. So everything else before that point is background information essentially to help explain how we got to this point.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So then having established that, the draft policy that starts on page 155 and with the highlighted colors, the blue indicates that there's existing language that's been revised and the yellow indicates that it's brand-new language that's being proposed to be. Okay. So with that being established, has any of the language that's in yellow, because that's brand-new, been applied in the process at all to date?
No, we have, I mean, everything is status quo with our cosponsor groups as of right now.
Okay.
We are following agreed-upon timelines with our field users. So for instance, November 17th versus November 15th for one of the scheduling deadlines. So we are following what is the current policy, okay?
Well, that's good to know. Okay, so then the yellow is, you know, brand-new language, it's, I guess I'm trying to get to the heart of, or I'm questioning how some of this language emerged? Like, did it come from, you know, problems that have cropped up along the way, things that staff's observed? Like, I, you don't need to go into, you know, super detail on this and I don't expect you to, but like, how did, where did the stuff in yellow come from, basically is kind of what I'm getting.
And, and the question really is one that I could answer. The seven different times that the policy's already been revisioned over the years. It's, yeah, something cropped up, we found a mistake, whether it was staff made, had a mistake in the policy or something occurred with the cosponsor groups or fees were developed, late fees were developed. And so that, that is what were the triggers. We would not revise a policy unless, unless it's something triggered us to do it. Policy writing is not necessarily something we absolutely want to be doing.
Yeah, I've done it myself many times, I, I understand the struggle and yeah, it's not something that I look forward to.
And, and, and I would say the other part of that is some of it is best practices. For instance, the city requesting description of how they meet some of those requirements for working with youth. That is what is best for the city to ensure that they're actually doing it. Now, are we collecting certifications and everything? No, because then we'd have to set deadlines for collecting that and you can't have a permit until we have all of this. And there's no way to really ensure that we have all of those certifications for coaches or those volunteer parents. So simply requesting what the policy is for that agency is what we would have to rely on.
Okay. Then I guess sort of my wrap-up series of questions is the, the process by which this came to us tonight. Because there, there are edits which I think, I don't think they necessarily drastically change policy, but they're pretty extensive throughout the whole policy, which makes sense because it's a comprehensive update and, you know, you don't want to waste time on just clerical stuff. You want to have it, actually have some meat to it. The background information that was provided indicates that the 2018 policy was presented to the policy committee of this commission first for feedback and kind of drafting a step which hasn't happened here. Can staff speak to, you know, why that decision occurred?
Yeah, and that really goes to, we staff did not feel that it changed the essence of the policy, the goals of the policy were not changed. The staff, and in talking to some of the cosponsor groups, these are administrative in nature. It's policy, it's, it's an extra piece of paper that they have to give us. It's, and, and so it does not really impact the, the day-to-day operation of how we go about doing business. And that is why we did not think that it had to go to the policy committee as we weren't really changing the policy as to we're enhancing it, we're making it stronger type of revisions.
And if I may, just to also add to that, this was also something that we felt that the whole commission would want to weigh in on versus just starting with the policy committee, which wanted to give all the information all at once to everyone.
Okay, I think that answers my questions. I'll have some feedback later during discussion. Yep.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Levy. Commissioner Mitra.
Okay, thank you. So. There'll be only one cosponsor and that was changed something around 16, 17, 18 to have multiple cosponsors allowed, is that, is that correct?
In 2018, we removed that requirement that said every group has to be different and it cannot duplicate services. We removed that at the time, we had multiple baseball cosponsor groups. We had multiple swim teams, we had multiple everything. So in my logical mind, it didn't make sense to say something we weren't living by.
Right, right. So on that, just, just to cure curious, since then, have we faced a situation where there is a conflict, right? You know, when we're allowing multiple in that and probably there isn't a, like you brought up the baseball, there could be a soccer team that have been playing for a long time. Now, all of a sudden, we are allowing somebody, somebody new or whatever reason, community new to come in and try to claim for that one. Now, I'm coming to, I have some question on the conflict, so I'm coming to that. Before that, has it ever happened to a point where there is like, okay, this is, this thing need to be revisited? Or, or is that anything? So the, the reason we changed that baseball, right? Baseball team that had a situation, that's why we changed the policy on that. Last seven, eight years, did we have a situation where we felt like, hey, you know what? If we have that, we need to rethink the whole policy because this is causing issues with the existing ones because they have been serving the communities for so long, issues with that one.
So the, the, the answer is no, we haven't had issues because the cosponsor groups, it's, they're responsible in number one, that they're supposed to be cooperative and work together to resolve issues and to work with city staff to share the spaces that, that are provided. Everybody knows that we have a finite amount of space, whether that's gyms, pool lanes or fields. And the, the goal of the policy and the goal of the cosponsor groups is supposed to be to promote San Ramon residents participating in sports. It's supposed to be a strategic partnership for the good of San Ramon youth or adults.
Yeah, so you're saying we didn't, we didn't have any?
We have not had any issues until, I'll say recently.
Okay, so again, I'm just going through the conflict situation, if at all. I'm, I'm just thinking about, that's all we are, just thinking, okay, what, what happens? What-if situations, right? So if we have, what is, again, I think Commissioner Seti brought it up. I mean, it's not very clear in that, what is the conflict resolution? So if I understand correctly, it's like, okay, city says, go, you sort it out yourself. If you cannot, we will come and tell this is what it is. Do you think it is the best way to do that, not to engage commission into at that point? The reason I'm telling you, because we get calls. We get calls from, you know, whether it's a dog park, whether it's, yes. Also, we got a park who is applied for a soccer field, didn't get a soccer field. Or somebody wants to have a cricket playing in the Sunday, didn't get a Sunday, right? We get, we get that, right? And we are bound to, by sitting here, we are bound to answer that questions. Now, how is that resolution happened, happen when two parties could not meet to a common ground and city made a call that I have to justify without knowing the background, how we did that? Or we'd not even knowing, probably not even knowing there is a conflict there, right? You see my point?
I see, yes.
But, and then I'm putting it in front of, and not only me, everybody here or in that, put to a situation where they say, answer me how this happened, right? So my question is, in that case, why do we not involve commission?
If I, if I may, sure, at this moment, the administrative programming for the Parks and Community Services handled by the, the Parks and Community Services staff. I don't believe the, the programming of the fields and the allocations is part of the charge of the commission. That's not to say that if a commissioner hears something that they shouldn't be able to come to staff myself and ask a little bit more for a little bit more background. So we for sure can give that information. But the day-to-day operations of the programming really does flow through us and I don't know that. So to say if that, if the commission would like to get into the business of allocations right now, from my understanding, that does not, that does not fall within the charge of that. When it comes to conflicts specifically to the policy, we do have, you know, we do let folks know within the allocations and scheduling page, which is on your page 167 for program page or excuse me, packet page, we talk about looking at establish, we follow the priority and then classification groups in there. And we then go down and look at if we take into fact the size of the cosponsor group, the size of the group at the time of the rental, the resident percentage of the user group, the numbers of hours that are requested, the percentage of girls participating. All of those things are kind of the tiers and the steps, you know, and I know that that might need, need to be more clarified as Commissioner Seti had said, the steps that are taken to resolve any user group conflicts. And really what we're talking about user group conflicts may be a day or two. There are certain sports, as, as Keith had talked about earlier, that, you know, at right now, we are ending, let's say, the soccer main season. So they had a majority of their, of their, their field space. That didn't mean they get all of the field space that they asked, but they got a good majority of the field space they asked, same thing with the pools. So we look at all those, so if the answer to the question, if I heard it correctly, about the conflict, we do have the steps that we work through from the policy. We also do ask the, the cosponsor groups to, to communicate and talk. Once we get to that step, first, we look at the, what the issue is, what is the question? Do we have any alternatives that we can provide for the cosponsor group, which then we provide for them? If that doesn't work, then it is, yeah, let's get groups together, let's, let's have you sit down and talk and say, how do you, how do you switch a day here or day? So someone may have, you know, Sundays are really important for me. Any chance you can change your Saturdays for me and things like that? And that, we would encourage that 100% and ask for that. And we do know that groups do that. And I think that some groups, if they're on the newer side, that's something that's, that's starting to, to begin or starting to be encouraged by our, our end anyway, to make sure that that happens. So I know that's a long-winded way to hopefully address the things that I heard, but essentially there is conflict resolution within the policy. We do work with the groups to try and do that and we do encourage the groups to move forward. And secondly, yes, if there is a commissioner that has any information that, that comes to them, please feel free to come to staff, again, starting with me and then we'll get you the information that you need and then also get the commission as a whole, the information they need to, to be able to provide that. So we want to make sure that we're providing, you know, the, they talk about transparency. We will give you the information that you need and we'll give you the, the, the most accurate info that we have for you at that time.
Thank you, Henry. Again, I just don't want to take too much time, but the thing is, my biggest concern is, and again, you too as well, as you said, that of course, if I have something, I will definitely come to you. I mean, we talk regularly, so that's not an issue. Issue is when the decision has been made and you said PCS on that, commission, people think about commission as a part of that and they're making a decision-making, right? So these are making on that. So that's my biggest concern, that I am responsible to answer questions, why this was done and on, when the, when the open field usage, anything. And there was a conflict, there was a meeting, there was a lot of things. It's not like just arbitrarily it happened. I, I, I expect it's not done arbitrarily, there's a reason behind it. So any shot of, any sort of, if we reach to a point where there is a really major conflict on that, so probably I would expect that to come to commission and then, and that would be my thing to come to commission. I'm not saying every allocation's thing, but at least when it reaches to that, let commission involve as well, because we can give you some of the suggestions we hear from the, from the community as well. So that is my request, suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to apologize to everybody because I have a lot of questions, a lot of feedback, because I think this should have been done differently. So I'm going to have to do it in public, in the, in the policy commission, so, ready? So, and by the way, Keith, I know this a lot, staff does a ton of time trying to overplay, I've sat through a user group, staff does a great job with user groups. I'm, as I'm just, all of this pertains to, my question will pertain to our policy and to make sure that we're defendable and we're also serving the citizens of San Ramon. So as I go through this, that's kind of where it is. So first of all, I was just curious, why do we call it cosponsor group versus like co-partner? I mean, how do we come up with cosponsor, by the way?
It's a legacy name from 1990s.
I know, but
I've never changed it.
I know, I've always asked why.
Would you like to change it?
I know, but, but, but anyways, I'll, I'll give a comment when I do it, okay?
That's your hardest question.
Hey, and, and, well, I know, I thought you thought it was softball.
Thanks.
Thought you appreciate that. Hey, the other thing is, I read, since we got all of that and it's all front-loaded, I read the 2018 application and it said that any cosponsor group, which I think we're operating, that, that the staff approves is supposed to go to the Parks Commission for them to review and approve, because it's in the application. It is, I'll show it to you. So I'm happy to show it to you, but.
Do we have a packet page?
Yeah, I can, I can pull. Yeah, I can, I can pull it out and show it to you, Keith, but I read it in, um, I read it in the, actually, actually, in the application, let me show where it's at, but on the application for two thousand eighteen, part of the process stated that the staff reviews the co-sponsored group, they go through it and then eventually the co-sponsored group needs to go up to the Parks Commission and get approved. So, uh, I'll have to pull that out, but I absolutely read that, so, because I had to read it twice and I highlighted it. So, um, we can come back to, I'll just keep going through my questions, but that's kind of a big one for me. The other thing I said is on page one fifty-nine of our current policy, it says, um, we will let a co-sponsored group in.
One fifty-nine?
Yeah, one fifty-nine.
Of the packet?
Current packet, yeah. So we're talking about, it says, required eligibility, the organization must provide a different enhanced level of service that is not already provided to the city. The organization must provide inclusive participation, blah, blah. But the, the big thing for me is, in the packet, I want to know who owns that decision? Who owns says, we're going to allow a co-sponsored group in? And who, I'd rather see a name, so we would say, the director of Parks and Community Service owns reviewing the, I would put a owner in there. And then I would want to see us document why we let another co-sponsored group in, right? So we're defendable, um, if we say, if we have, since I will be, I was president of our soccer club for years and years and years, another soccer club came in. And I'm like, wow, they, they don't really seem very differentiated than, than us. It'd be curious to see why they were in. So it would be helpful if all of a sudden, that way back when, when I was doing soccer or football, sorry about that, is I'd want to know why that other soccer club was let in, so I could go in and see, this is something they're offering different? And frankly, it'd be my weakness, sort of like a swat. So I think we need to call that out, that it would dock, who, who owns it? And also how we're documenting, we're letting a co-sponsor in, because it's not defendable to me.
So in the current, uh, I'm sorry, would you like me to respond?
What's that?
Would you like me to respond or was that just a?
Yeah, I mean, you absolutely respond.
So in the, in the current policy.
Yep.
The application starts on page, uh, one fifty of the packet. Uh, this is kind of like a cover sheet of what we would end up recreating. Down at the bottom, the, the, the application comes into staff. Uh, we then go through, make sure all the documents are there, look through the descriptions, what's being offered.
Yep.
Staff, staff being, uh, over the years has been myself, the pool scheduler, the gym scheduler, the supervisors of those areas, the field scheduler, the supervisor of those areas, we make a recommendation and provide that recommendation to the director. On page one fifty, the director has to sign off. Obviously, as you are recommending, we can put that all in, right?
I would, I would absolutely put it in there and I would say there'll be documentation available. If a user group wants to say, why did we let another user group in? We just need to be defendable and it's got to be in public eye that we let another sponsor group in and this is why, right? And then Kyle, or sorry, Commissioner Levy pulled this up while I was talking.
Perfect.
Under page one twelve, section four, six. So I'll let you, since it took me forever to find it, okay? It's a co-sponsor and application process. The group must meet the criteria and provide recommendations attached to park recreation. Number two, a recommendation from staff will be forwarded to Parks and Community Service Commission for final approval, right? Request for co-sponsors from senior citizen groups, et cetera, et cetera. But for me, the way I read that, Keith, was we, a co-sponsored group provides, the director of Parks and Community Service approves it, then it comes to the Parks and Community Service Commission for approval. That's what I read and I haven't, I don't.
And so that ended with the approval of the current policy in two thousand eight, in June of two thousand eighteen. That was no longer part of the policy.
Well, I would tell you that I thought that was what was given to us in the packet. I thought that was, that's where the confusion was for me, I thought that was a two thousand eighteen.
That's attachment A, that's June thirteenth, twenty eighteen, staff report and addendums.
Okay, well, guess what? I think, I think we should put that back in. My recommendation is that we put that back in as we put in sponsor groups, because as a co-sponsor comes in, we want to make sure that, um, you know, we understand what one's coming in and also frankly, it's kind of knowledgeable, maybe we welcome them. But I think there should be a process that we have them put it back in, so, um, I guess that was a comment, not a question, I apologize about that. Okay, um, I'd say criteria, I, I was just curious, why did we raise, I, I think I know why, but why did we raise a res? You have to have a thousand San Ramon residents and we raised it from fifty to seventy-five percent? And I might have been reading two thousand fourteen, so.
Right, so that, that, the, the threshold of residency was increased in two thousand eighteen and that was based off of what we were seeing from surrounding agencies. They were going with anything from seventy-five percent to eighty, eighty-five percent. Um, and since we were already, um, increasing the threshold, we went with that seventy-five mark.
Okay, cool, that's helpful. I mean, I'm, I'm super comfortable with it. Okay, um, it says, uh, under page one sixty-three, if I'm a co-sponsor, I said, why do I need to submit my budget, good standing? I mean, we're, we're asking some really, I know it's public information, it's a certain nonprofit information, but we already have it. They're paying, if they're paying us in time and good standing, why do they need to submit all that paperwork every year?
Because again, uh, as Commissioner Mitra said, he gets phone calls from people. The city gets phone calls from participants of our co-sponsored groups. Some of them are complaints. We need to make sure that the groups that we are strategically partnering with are on the up and up. And so part of that check on an annual basis is requesting a, a budget. Now, it's not, we're not saying what level budget, what budget detail that we're asking for. We simply want an overall organization budget to make sure that they are solvent, that they are, you know, that, that, that they look, that they are operating, uh, to us, uh, on the up and up.
Okay.
And if I could, if I could just add on that, Keith, because this started back, back in the time. And I think part of that is, is there's an expectation with the co-sponsored group that, that, that the, the community thinks that the city is looking at that group to that level. There's an expectation that if we are going to partner with an organization and allow them to use the majority of our field space, that we would have a better understanding of that organization. So I think it helps, it, we felt at the time, when we put it in there, that it was a good opportunity for us to be more educated with the groups that were co-sponsoring and basically allowing first access to fields and cheaper cost to fields, to make sure we understood that organization and, and where, where that field, where that revenue is going, right? In some cases, a lot of these field user groups are, they're charging for their space. It's, it, it would make sense for the, the city to understand where, where are those revenue and expenses? So we understand what's happening on our fields by the groups that we've chosen to partner with.
Well, I mean, if we truly look at, I mean, it's, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we make it easy for us to deal with if someone's, year over year? So I get it. Okay, the next, the next question I have is around, and I'm sure this is why the city turns here, is around personal information. We're collecting addresses of people, we're collecting names of people, we're collecting a lot of personal information from people. And I've done a ton of training for my company. I'm really curious on why, why do we do it? How's that information being protected by the city? To make sure that, you know, who, you know, who has proper access to that information and how are we safeguarding it? So I think you kind of get the gist of the question, because I'm kind of uncomfortable with what we're collecting and I'm not comfortable with how we're safeguarding it, so.
So the information is collected so we can establish residency, uh, boys versus girls, uh, girls percentage rates. We also, uh, we know over the years, we have received what we believe are, I'll just call it falsified documentation. And so the, if we're going to ask for names, um, we are, to, to establish residency, we'd like to see the address. At one point, we even asked for schools that they attended, uh, because that's a lot harder to falsify than just giving us a name, an age and a boy or a girl. So there, there is reasoning, we, the only staff that sees is the staff receiving it, uh, possibly the director and the staff reviewing it. Other than that, it goes in their file and we record numbers.
So, and that, and how is that information secure in the city?
It's secured on the city's servers.
Okay, and, and who has access to it?
Would be the individuals that I just stated.
Okay.
I, I, sorry, the, the folder is not locked, so it would be people within PCS that have access to that, uh, that particular drive.
I would love to see a policy as be, how we're handling that information and making sure it's secure and that to be available. So if anyone says, hey, how are we doing it? Or if we ever have a leak or someone hacks us, it'd be helpful to understand that a little bit better, uh, if we can. So, okay, that's super helpful, thanks, Keith.
Sure, if, if, can the policy simply, and, and I'm not sure this is the answer, but can the policy simply be, we use it, record numbers and then we discard the information, we shred it?
I just want to make, what I tell you is, if someone ever came to the city and they asked, what was our process in protecting that sense of data information? That would have very clear process and that were protected, if all of a sudden someone sues us because we didn't have a clear process that was, I'm sure, or looked at it, that we, that we're defendable and that would, only the right people have access, not anyone else. So I just wanted to double check on that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks, Keith, appreciate it. And then, um, okay, so if, the next questions deal more with process and how we communicate back to user groups, right? I've read a lot about user groups got to send this information, they cancel field, but do we send an email back? I'd like to see it documented, do we send an email back saying, hey, San Ramon Soccer, you canceled the field, we got it? So they know that they, they count, they, they got, they canceled in time and they're not going to be charged for a late cancellation. So do we communicate back to the users?
Too, because that would be part of the permit process, they would either receive a credit in which the permit would reflect that or their account would reflect that, or they would be charged for additional use. So they would, uh, either way, understand that they, uh, that whatever they requested has been completed.
I'm just talking, if I, if I cancel field, I just, like on page one sixty-nine, it wasn't clear that they get an email back saying, I've, I've received your cancellation, cancellation, new word, I've received that you canceled the field, you're good to go, right? So that way they're not wondering, am I going to get a charge? I just want to make sure that they're very clear, if I'm a user, I canceled a field, I'm not going to get charged. So we're communicating back to the users, right?
To clarify, in the policy, in the section that you're talking about cancellation and refunds, you would like some sort of line stating that staff will, will confirm.
Yeah.
In writing or something.
Please, please, that way the users know, right? Don't have to worry like, oh, hey, and I think the same thing, frankly, when they submit their budget and everything, hey, thank you, San Ramon Soccer, received your budget, the whole deal. So they don't have to worry about, oh, do we get it in on time? Because they have documentation that the city has received it, right? So how do we define that policy pretty good? Uh, with violation, okay, uh, oh, hey, on page one seventy-three, we talked about what requirements we want on the field users when they use a field? I didn't see anything about like a first aid kit. Do we, I mean, everything's about cleanup afterwards, but do we want our users, it's just a question, but if someone gets injured, it's great, you know? Should we have, should we have them have a first aid?
I believe that's something that is on each organization to, within their emergency action plans. I think for us, um, depending on where they are, they're, if they're at the pool, there, there is AEDs and equipment that, and that nature. But I think specifically when it comes to the, the emergency access portion of what they're doing for their, their participants really goes through the organization.
Got it, but do we as a city want to call out that we expect the organization to have emerg, uh, first aid kit in there at the field?
If, if that's something that the commission would like us to include, we can include that.
That's a question, but it's something that.
Yeah, no, it's, I don't know that there's a, a, a need for us to do that specifically.
Okay, I didn't know, because that's why I'm asking.
And that may actually fall under, uh, the description of how they work with youth. If the requirement is that they are certified in first aid and CPR, part of being certified in first aid CPR is then to have the tools necessary to do those skills.
Right.
So that could be part of that document.
It was, got to make sure it's documented somewhere, right? That they, because I, I saw you, Keith, I saw you call that out, so it sounds like I can get in trouble now.
I'm just going to weigh in a little bit on that and I don't want the city to get into the business of certifying that, uh, first aid equipment is sufficient for a specific group. Once we do that, then we're into an area that we don't really want to get into. So my, my suggestion would be exactly what Keith was describing, which is that we require the certifications and then that through those certifications, those folks should know what equipment they have to have on site.
Okay, and as long as we have documentation, I think that would be great. So, um, we talked about confirmation emails. Oh, hey, tier one on page, uh, one ten, oh, I'm sorry, on page one eighty-five, I just, can we define tier one, tier two, tier three better? Because I thought we did a better job in, on page one ten on two thousand, two thousand eight. It might be two thousand fourteen, Keith, but to two thousand eighteen, I just don't think we're defining tier one, tier two, tier three really clearly, for me anyways. And what makes someone a tier one co-sponsor? So, um, that's just some questions on why we've made it more concise. That sound like feedback versus a question, sorry. But is there a way that we, is there a way that we make it more clear, why did we state it the way we did?
That the way within the glossary of terms, is that, is it? So just a little more robust.
It just, yeah, it's, it's just different from what we had in eighteen versus what we had. And, you know, so that way someone comes and says, hey, why is so-and-so tier one? There's a really clear definition, tier one, tier two, right? Okay, I am almost done, sorry about that, feels like you're in a hot seat, I apologize. Uh, we already got that and then, um, yeah, I think that's it, the other ones are good. I, I'm going to say this, is there any other help you need from us as it parks besides asking all these questions? Is there any other help needed from us?
No, so, so no, the, the, the ask of tonight was to provide direction.
Yep.
And approve the proposed dot, uh, policy. Uh, that ultimately was the ask for tonight and that ask can be in whole or in part. We could potentially bring back sections.
Yeah.
Or portions, if that's, uh, the wish of the commission, uh, so add, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, we're going to go to public, I just want to make sure we're clear at the end, so thanks so much, Keith, I really appreciate it. Okay, public comment, Kathy, uh, and we have three minutes for public comment, all the time, and when we get close, I'll let you know when we get close.
So our first speaker is Venkatesh Chirilakala.
I do not see the person.
All right.
I believe they left.
All right. Sorry, my mouse. Our second speaker is Ramkesh Imara.
Hi, welcome. Thanks again, and I said, my name is Ramesh Imadi and I help manage the SRC Youth Program. And just briefly to share about SRC Youth, uh, it's established in twenty sixteen with thirty-five kids, now grown to about four hundred kids and, uh, with required San Ramon residency. And we are the reigning Northern California Regional U thirteen and U fifteen H Group Champions. And we have many girls and boys went and representing the USA National Team. And all this is possible with only the world-class infrastructure we have in the city and the world-class coaches we have, which we contracted in them for long term. And, and we requested, we are here because we requested the policy review a few weeks back because the current co-sponsored policy does not clearly, clear, there's a clear process for onboarding a new user group without impacting the existing groups who are serving for last ten years. And as a result of this existing policy, we are bumped out by one-third of the allocation, which we had over last ten years. Without any process which staff was recommending today, without any discussions between the groups, without any collaboration between the groups, they took the demand and they said, hey, you are bumped out of one-third of the allocation without any, any discussion. With it, and it impacts our national pathway players pathways. It impacts the long-term contracts which we wrote with these high-profile coaches who are kind of helping our kids. It impacts our operational things, nothing being discussed, nothing being discussed. So with the policy which is proposed, nothing changes. We are going to be here next year again with the current policy that is going to be changed. Only changes that are made is you need to have three hundred people, hundred people minimum to be a nonprofit and you, you need to be serving three years. After three years, you, you can have ten more co-sponsored user groups in the ten tiers. With no infrastructure built, we are going to be, keep fighting and it's going to be impactful to the existing organization. With no infrastructure built, we are going to be keep fighting and it's going to be impactful to the existing organizations. And this policy need to be relooked holistically. And we are not consulted on this policy, asking what, what do you think? We are asked to come to this meeting and share our views and no meetings were scheduled to share our feedback, to ask for our thoughts. So my request is, this policy is not going to make any difference to what we are here and why this subject was put on the agenda today. So I request you guys, please consider carefully before we approve this, because nothing is going to change with what city is proposing or what staff is proposing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Kathy, thank you next.
Our next speaker is Kalpesh Viani.
Welcome. Thanks for, thanks for being here.
Yeah, good evening and thank you for the opportunity. I'm echoing Ramesh's sentiment, uh, for the policy changes. Basically, I, I am with the academy for three years. Uh, my son plays U thirteen. Uh, are you able to hear me? Okay?
Yeah, if you can speak closer mic, that'd help.
Okay. My son plays U thirteen, is going on to U fifteen. And he's been, I've been associated with the youth cricket volunteering with the academy for three years now. And as a, because of this additional sponsorship coming in, co-sponsors coming in, we are losing grounds. We are losing the time on ground, specifically Windmere and Quail Run Ground, which are, these two grounds are very essential for our U thirteen and U fifteen kids. Our U thirteen team practices weekly there. And because of this change, ground will not be available and forty-eight of our kids will not be able to practice regularly. We also use this ground for our USA National Hub Championship Games. They happen, uh, March through June. And we typically field four teams. And out of four teams, we are required to provide home ground for two teams. And because we don't have grounds, we will not be able to field four teams and essentially, uh, avoid, uh, basically deny the players, uh, opportunity to grow. Additionally, um, we also, our U fifteen team, which practices on Quail Run Ground. And they also participate in this championship, uh, USA Championship Games on Quail Run. They have same issues. Going to, going back to, you know, I think these kids, they have been practicing five days, seven days a week. Managing their schoolwork, managing high school, some of you have, uh, seems like coached high school or, uh, you know, competitive sports. It's very hard. Kids are putting their dedication and it's our job to provide the facilities. If we take away the facilities, all their hard work will mean nothing. All the coaches that we have onboarded will have no job to do and that will result into, you know, catastrophic situations. So we really request into you to look at the policy carefully, understand the situation, understand the lead, needs of the local organizations. And then only onboard new organization. That'll really help. Otherwise, you know, I've been living in San Ramon from twenty eighteen, love the city. But if I don't get support from, from the city, what am I doing here?
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Kathy, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mayank Sharma.
Welcome. Thanks for taking the time. Appreciate it.
Hello, good evening. Uh, I've been a San Ramon resident for ten years. My name is Mayank Sharma. I actually live right up the street, um, in the Bridges community. And, um, I'm very happy to be a San Ramon resident. I think we love and live in a beautiful city. Uh, that offers so much for our kids and families. Um, so taking further the points that Ramesh and Kalpesh have already made. You know, we, I want to make sure that my kid, along with all the other kids who play cricket, they have that smile on their face. They have that enthusiasm, that curiosity to learn. And, you know, that is only going to happen if we keep the available infrastructure available for these kids, right? So if I speak about a few specifics here, uh, San Ramon has three fields right now, which we feel privileged to have. Uh, but again, as Ramesh pointed out, the, uh, the number of kids, when we started in two thousand eighteen to now, has grown to, it's grown significantly exponentially, actually, to about four hundred. Um, and we will get only three days to use these fields over the weekend. So that obviously has, you know, scheduling and capacity challenges because there are multiple age groups that this, uh, organization is servicing, right? Under ten, under eleven, under thirteen, under fifteen. So there's a lot of interest and capacity. Uh, because of, and you know, right now, even with the existing fields, we are facing challenges accommodating all of the different teams that, that want to play, right? Um, the second point I want to make is that cricket games are generally longer because of how the game is. Um, even, you know, U thirteen, uh, uh, games would probably take about four to five days, right? So in, in a, on a shorter day, there probably will only be about a couple of games if we, if we do really well and start early in the morning. Um, a U fifteen game, you're probably only going to have one day, uh, one, one game in a day, right? So, so there are those duration of the game challenges as well that, that we face. Um, and thirdly, uh, you know, from the excellence of the S, SRCA players. I think despite these limitations, whatever we are facing, I think the kids are really showing, you know, immense growth. Um, SRCA players are being, are representing state level, even international level right now. And, and we expect the same hopefully for our kids. So that we can eventually have kids playing, you know, major league cricket. We can have eventually kids playing USA national team and actually help with the overall growth of the sport in California and, and United States. Um, so my recommendation or request to the committee here is to, um, you know, really understand the issue. The issue is not, um, not being, uh, you know, that issue is not that we are, we are against sharing the infrastructure with anybody.
Yeah, if you close it down, that'd be great.
Okay, if you're not against sharing the infrastructure with everybody, anybody, but it should not be at the cost of, uh, the kids' development that are already playing and, and the infrastructure that they have. If that gets reduced and if that then compensates into reducing on the coaching side and the organization, that's going to adversely affect. Uh, I, my last point is that in, instead of, you know, doing this, we should probably look at increasing the capacity, which is obviously a long-term thing, but that'll be my request.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Kathy?
Our next speaker is Rohit Talakula.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, my name is Rohit Talakula. Uh, I'm a long-term resident of San Ramon. I've been here for the last ten years now. Uh, my son plays U ten cricket. He just started last year. Uh, he does enjoy cricket a lot. So, uh, some of the things what I would like to discuss is, um, as everybody has called out, right? Um, uh, the first main thing is the evaluation of the field capacity, um, before adding any new groups. Uh, we would like to see there is enough capacity, uh, in terms of the number of grounds available. Uh, as everybody has called out, there are, we are limited to three grounds and the most of the games are played over the weekends. So that is number one key point. I would probably look into it. And the second thing is, um, some of the demand when it comes to across all the sports compared to, uh, cricket and adjusting all the other fields, right? So, uh, that is something which, uh, as everybody has called out, we would like to see there's an increase in the number of, uh, fields rather than decrease in the number of overall capacity for the other sports. And then, um, there has to be a clear documented tie, tiebreak, uh, especially in terms of the process. Uh, when allocating the fields, uh, this involves a lot of staff consultation and other user groups to ensure the decisions are made fairly. Uh, again, the development is more transparent and it is more of a documented tiebreak, um, to make sure the field allocations are done. And then the last part is, uh, avoid any kind of allocations to the existing nonprofit organization. I, I, I do understand there's an increase in demand, uh, but at least for the sake of SRC as well as the other nonprofit organizations to make sure, things are not reduced over a period of time. Uh, the lastly is, uh, SRC has been doing a due diligence in the last year or so. Based on my experience with the, with the organization, I've seen a lot of kids grow from, uh, U ten to a national level. Uh, they have been representing the country as well. Uh, I would like to see my kid do the same thing at some time down the road. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nish Banerji.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Nish Banerji. I'm a resident of Dublin, California. And my son, uh, is in SRC player cricket coaching. So I want to highlight a very specific, uh, piece of a bigger problem that Ramesh and other parents have already shared. So I basically am active advocate of SRC Youth in a league called NCCA, goes by the name Northern California Cricket Association. Wherein I own a team under a club called Bay Thunders. Um, Bay Thunders is a club which focuses on youth, specifically on SRC Youth. And that's what I, I actually, uh, focus on. So, uh, so there was certain observation that I made till twenty twenty-four wherein most of this tri-valley youth, mainly in San Ramon, SRC Youth, they were facing challenges in participating in NCCA because of some of the, uh, reasons like they had to travel to the South Bay, uh, to play most of their games to the extent they had to travel to Fresno and other places. Uh, it's, it's, it's really tiring for the youth to go that far. Um, many, many clubs, many teams used to exploit the kids by, you know, just luring them games and they're saying, um, being part of just a playing eleven, not giving them good opportunities. Just because San Ramon did not have a good ground measuring up to an adult league, right? But all these problems, all these problems were solved in twenty twenty-five when Quail Run was inaugurated. And I was able to put a youth team goes by the name BT SRC Youth, which participated in the NCCA Premier League Division C. All the youth performed excellently well and we were positioned somewhere in middle of the points table. And it all, uh, you know, it, it was all become possible because of Quail Run coming into life. Now, the problem with this co-sponsorship policy update is if, uh, because of this policy update, uh, this, and this, this ground was our home ground. Where a lot of games have been played, the youth played in their own home ground. And if because of this policy update, the ground gets taken away by one-third, this is going to be a bigger problem. We will just go back to where we were and we will not be able to have this youth participate in NCCA, which gives a pathway for U fifteen and above kids to move from Division C to Division B to Division A. And believe me, in NCCA Division A, if any youth performs, it is highly regarded and, you know, but teams from minor league and to, uh, in USA Cricket under nineteen keeps a close eye on Division A performances. So this gives a clear pathway.
Can we wind it up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. So basically what I want to say is that, uh, if the Quail Run goes, even if we cut down, um, the Quail Run ground, uh, allotment to these kids, they, they will have hard time participating in NCCA, which will go a long way and the, the, there will be an opportunity lost.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Hamad Book.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening and, uh, the commission. Uh, thank you for a policy that's so detailed, um, and really like that the city believes in expanding, uh, the sports and not monopolizing or encouraging monopoly of any particular organization. But as you know, uh, monopoly in sports league, right? It reduces the competition, increases chances of bias and bullying. And, uh, you know, um, pricing also, uh, doesn't remain checked. And, uh, excess gets reduced. Um, this is, this is the world of options, you know, for everything, uh, you go to, uh, Safeway or anywhere, you have fifty things for a drink. And here you say, no, 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 we'll just do one. I think that that's a very, very unfair way of looking at things, uh, and I'm very happy with this new policy. Um, so that will not suppress any new organization. And that's what, you know, I have been a commissioner in the past somewhere else. And I think, uh, one thing we always looked at is, you know, um, nobody's suppressed. And we are, uh, we promote the game as deep as we can in any organization, any city. And that gives them a pathway for growth. Uh, it gives them a good pathway for growth. Uh, there is a lot of, uh, trust that community will build in the commission, in the city, in the, in the, um, council, whatever, whoever is making calls and, uh, player will have better experience. So I think, uh, uh, healthy competition, like having two or more leagues in which, uh, the policy allows, um, is, is good thing. Um, or two or more academies, uh, is a, is a good thing, uh, for, for the community overall. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, when I heard all your questions, it's very, very detailed, very good. Uh, impressive. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Next.
Nick Shapiro.
Welcome. Good evening. How are you? Um, my name's Nick Shapiro. I'm the Junior Olympic Commissioner for USA Softball and I'm also the president of San Ramon Valley Girls Athletic League, Cerro Gal Softball. I'd like to first congratulate Mr. Perez Alonso on his, uh, new job. Um, he's very well respected, uh, throughout the Bay Area, so I know he'll do very well here. Uh, I'd also like to get a shout out to the maintenance department. At San Ramon, the best field crew, we work very closely with them and, um, they deserve credit. Uh, but there's also one other person that I would like to recognize and that's Jody Curly. Um, she is, uh, really the key, as she is back there smiling. Um, she handles all the reservations and everything for all these user groups and it's a monumental task. And she really goes out of her way to take care of that. Um, a lot of stuff has come up here tonight, um, and I'm going to ad hoc here a little bit. Um, because I'm going to advocate for the large co-sponsor groups, I don't know the term. Um, because of their financial solvency, which is the stability of that is very important for the city and for the groups themselves. Also the background check, because this is about protecting the youth. And I can tell you that USA Softball, uh, because we are directly tied to the Olympic Committee and via act of Congress, we are enacted by the Safe Sport Act. Um, have the most stringent background checks available. Um, and I can tell you stories of individuals who've got bystander background checks that USA Softball has picked up and prevented them from being around youth. So that needs to definitely be taken into consideration. Um, there's a lot of outside, small user groups, Livermore Peninsula, that find their way over here to San Ramon because they hear there are fields available. And, um, the more you infiltration you have of these small, as we were talking about Daddy Ball pop-ups, the harder it is to police and more likely, uh, you expose the city to litigation if something happens. It's just, um, very difficult situation that we deal with all the time. Um, on a final note, uh, my glasses here, I'm sorry. Uh, I am excited as we were speaking of emerging sports. Um, the San Ramon Valley Girls Athletic League and West Coast Blitz are joining to bring two all-girls sports organizations together with one mission. Um, empowering young women through athletics, leadership and opportunity. Um, San Ramon Valley Girls Athletic League is the largest softball league in the Western United States. Um, and West Coast Blitz is becoming a nationally known, um, leader in flag football. And so we have now partnered, oh, sorry. Uh, and, um, again, we felt that this was the best way to bring this emerging sport. And so, uh, look forward to, uh, bringing that to San Ramon.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
That was our last speaker.
Last speaker. Okay. Thank you so much, Kathy. Okay, we are now going to move into commissioner comments. Um, so if you'd like to comment, please, um, hit your screen and let me know. So, um, we will go first with Commissioner Mitra, please.
First of all, Kit and team, really appreciate the, all the hard work and especially we heard few names. So appreciate that. Especially another one, another one group I really want to have, uh, is of our field maintenance team. Uh, they, they do amazing job. So all the teams, all the things on that. Now here we are talking about a very specific. Now here we are talking about a very specific area, not the whole operation. So the team does amazing job throughout the year, maintaining it, managing it, rostering it, everything. That's a huge, huge work. So it is just irrespective of whatever we're discussing here today, it's a great shout out from my side and from the whole commission. I think that's the way the team works, right? So so first of all, really thank you, thank you for that. Going through that and literally, Keith, I learned a lot, lot of things I didn't even know. The history behind it, what is that, what are the different policies on that? So what I thought that if I have to really speak about it, first I need to learn as much as possible, right? Time was not enough. I think you have way more understanding knowledge because you worked through that. But few other things are my observations, especially since I am well connected into the community. I hear a lot, people reach out to me, I talk to them on that. So I know the pulse, I know the pulse in some areas, some cases, that what is going through on that. It may or may not come percolate up there, but at least I I get that, I have that. And I'm blessed with that opportunity, so I really like that. So here are a few things that I observed today, I heard today, there are a lot of comments today. Thank you, everybody, for that. I think first thing first, I want to go back to my original things when there is a conflict. And again, Henry, just to come to a point, I'm not saying that we commission needs to know all that. Not, I'm just only talking about when there is a conflict that cannot be resolved. That is, that is the only, only situation. I think commission needs to be involved because that decision can impact their, who reached them, how they are being reached. So that kind of conflicting situation where two parties cannot sit down and and kind of come to an agreement on that, it needs to brought down, brought up to the commission as well because in that. Similarly, I will come to Chair Breed's point that when there is a new cosponsor being added, if it was there in the policy, we should bring that back again. That is my, my, my approval. And thanks, Chair Breed, because I didn't, I kind of overlooked that, I didn't know that one. So if that was a policy there, that it needs to be brought up to the commission for their full evaluations. And somebody said background check, I completely support that. We should be doing background check. We have a limited capacity and a lot of people talked about capacities. I think that is the whole, if we have unlimited capacity, we wouldn't be discussing this at all. So we have a limited capacity, we have huge demands on all the sports and and which is a good thing, good thing, right? So but we, how do we manage that? So I think we need to manage this, adding a new cosponsor as well, need to go through a bidding process. And that involves commission as well. So that is, that is my opinion. Also, we are the third thing I want to say that if, again, whether it's a soccer, whether it's a baseball, softball, cricket, whatever, if a current cosponsor is serving a community for a long time, right? I'm not saying, and again, somebody says about monopoly, I absolutely like that, we do not allow that. But at the same time, if somebody serving it for a long time and grew that and kind of feed the national team players on that, we need to consider their financial solvency as well, right? Again, thank you for somebody bringing in the financial solvency if they cannot survive this because of this. If a major chunk of their fields are being taken away and that might impact their financial bottom line, what are we, what are we achieving by that? We had a good system, we had a good group of people who are managing that. And again, not supporting monopoly, but at the same time, if the whole process kind of put that system at risk, whom are we serving? Are we serving by that, are we serving the community or not? So I have a big question on that one. And the last one, I would say, capacity. So when we add a new cosponsor, going through all the processes and everything that we discussed, I think we need to also thoroughly evaluate our capacity. Are we, do we have enough capacity to add a new cosponsor, right? Just for the sake of it, adding a cosponsor when we do not have enough capacity or we do not have a pathway to our process to get at the capacity. I mean, nobody will have full way or their demand met, right? No group will have that. Again, question is like, are we, is the best way to serve the community, right? So that is, that is my whole thing. But overall, I would again say indeed that thank you staff, thank you maintenance team, thank you all the, all the, all the good thing you do throughout the year. So this is a big, big thank you from my side.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitra. Commissioner Vice Chair Levy.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to start by thanking all the people who provided public comment tonight, either in person or by writing. This is clearly an issue that really resonates with a really active sector of this community and it resonates with me. So I appreciate that, I appreciate you taking the time to be informed, come here tonight and voice your concerns or, you know, thoughts on this matter. I think, you know, the fact that the city has the facilities that people want to use and people want to use in such an organized fashion, I think is really great. It shows exactly how desirable San Ramon is as a community. And I think the city has gone out of its way to support those goals in ways that I think benefit everyone. And I think the existing policy reflects the fact that the city really wants to help support those efforts in a way that promotes overall, general, you know, good public policy aims and also protects the city from legal liability because that's the world we live in. And in an ideal world, the city would be able to approve every request without having to go through this rigorous process because there'd be enough space for everyone and, you know, there'd be no conflicts. It's not the world we live in, decisions have to be made and there needs to be a process to evaluate that. And I think this policy, you know, provides the framework for that. And I think a lot of the updates that staff have suggested are good ones that would help clarify that process, make clear what the steps are, help with all that. So I I don't take an issue with that. I do think that this is a lot of information to present all at once to the commission. And I understand Director Perez Alonso, your point that you thought that the whole, it would benefit the whole commission to hear this all at once. And I think that that was well intentioned. But I do think presenting extensive updates of this nature first to the commission's finance policy subcommittee first would have allowed us to do a lot of this committee work then and then be able to present a more polished product tonight instead of having to now have this discussion, you know, with all of us here. Not that we, not that nothing wasn't accomplished, I think a lot of good feedback and good ideas were raised. But I do think that this process would have benefited from being reviewed at the committee first, especially additions of this nature. And I agree that it doesn't change the overall goals or direction of the policy. I don't dispute that, but I do think it helps refine them in ways that would have benefited from input at the committee level first before coming to the commission. And there have been a number of ideas suggested tonight from commissioners of things we would like to see added to the policy, things that are not in the version that's being presented to us right now. And so having said that, I don't feel prepared tonight to approve the policy that's been presented to us, even with the understanding that staff will go back and make the edits that we discussed, just because some of them were pretty extensive. I, you know, talking about tiebreakers and things to resolve conflicts and things of that nature, adding commission input of new cosponsors back into it. All that is something I feel a lot more comfortable with seeing in writing in a product presented to the commission again. Now, I don't necessarily think that, I, I think this could just go to another commission meeting with those edits made. It might also benefit from going to the policy subcommittee first for, you know, a slightly more detailed, deep, detailed kind of polish off the edges before it comes back to us again. And I know that that takes time and I know that, you know, decisions have to be made. But at the same point, I, I don't really buy that there's a sense of urgency here. If the last update was in twenty eighteen and now it's twenty twenty five and this is being presented to us for the first time since twenty eighteen, I feel like there's time for a committee review and there's time for it to come back to the commission again. So that's kind of my position on this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Levy. Commissioner Shetty.
Thank you, Chair. So thank you all the residents for coming and giving your feedback. That definitely helps us to understand, to hear firsthand. So I see we have two problems today to solve. One is the policy change, which we all gave the feedback. Other one is based on the feedback. My understanding is immediate problem is there's a two cosponsor competing for the limited space. So two issues are there. And I honestly believe with the change in the democracy, more South Asians are meeting, this problem is going to continue unless we increase the capacity. So I think as a commission, I believe we definitely need to explore the option of increasing number of field, cricket field, because that's gaining the popularity and I have witnessed first time, first hand. Second thing, as far as making decision on the policy is concerned, there are a lot of open questions, lot of feedback has come. I suggest we put a, the team can go back and revise it so, so that we are solving it one, one time. We don't have to touch it every year. Third thing, how are we going to solve the competing issue, competing cosponsor? Because I heard from some of the resident that their kids are on the pathway to the championship, that will impact and they may lose whatever the number of seats already they have. So my suggestion would be, I know the immediately season is starting in January. So can we do the status quo till we come, come up with the new policy and it gets approved? I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comments? Let's see, Commissioner Conick.
Yeah, just real quick, this one I think was kind of drinking from a fire hose for me. So, so I guess the first thing I'll say is I, I'm always personally very cognizant of, of not wanting to get too far into the weeds and get into staff's business too much because I don't, because I think there's a fine line there. And I think we have to be careful about that. But with that said, it just seems like there's a lot going on here. And it doesn't, there doesn't seem, and I agree with Kyle, there doesn't seem to be a super tight timeline. And maybe something like this, this is a, maybe a classic example of something that should be or could be handled at the committee level or at least researched and analyzed better at the committee level before, before it comes to the, the commission. So I, I would, I would advocate for us pushing pause, I think, and giving us just a little more time and thought.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Conick. Any other comments before I make mine?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone tonight for your comments. I actually learned a lot and it was super helpful and super insightful. Also, you know, I want to, you know, say thanks, you know, the staff. This is a very difficult job, right? And I, you know, it's so interesting because everything runs smoothly, but the world changes quickly on us. And I think if I look past the years, everything's looked great. And I'm with, you know, Commissioner Mitra on the sense of, you know, we, we have amazing fields and we have amazing services that take care of our fields. And the last thing I'd say is, if you think about the user group, the user group touched or affects a lot of our citizens. I was trying to add the numbers up, the number of people that use our fields. And we, you know, the surveys that the city manager did on a couple of years ago, what's important to the citizens of San Ramon is our fields. So the one group that touches everyone is this group sitting in here because we have so many of our citizens that we don't have to see every day that have interaction with these groups. So I really feel it's, it's really on us, it's not staff. But how do we be defendable in our policies? And how can we have a policy that we help, we provide staff or we work with staff to make sure that we're defendable on decisions that they make so they can continue to do their job with excellence what they've done in the past? So, and I apologize for some of the questions, it was just with Commissioner Conick, it was a lot to read. So, and trying to figure out what, you know, connect or anything. So there were some out of bounds, I apologize on that one, Keith. So what I would tell you is, but and know that I'm thankful the hard work you guys all do. I, I wanted, everything Commissioner Vice Chair Levy said is what I believe. So I'm not going to repeat it again. And I, and I'm kind of in the camp of, you know, what he said. And with, when I, as a park commissioner, I'm with Commissioner Conick that, you know, when do you not get in the weeds? And that's on our job. But when I get as many phone calls and questions about cosponsor policy, then it makes me, you know, scratch my head said I better read the policy and get educated. And, and I think it's good that we paused and presented to us and to get feedback. So, you know, I'm kind of in the camp of, I think we need to try to do exactly what Vice Chair Levy said and follow that. So I can be clear and concise, but I really, and it's hard, by the way, Keith, it's hard to stand up there and take all the questions, but I really appreciate you doing it. So thank you so much. That's all I got. So go ahead. Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitra, I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. So this is my, my personal opinion with that, what we heard so far today and also so far from the residents and also the commission, that we take a pause today here, where we have and get, go back to what we got the feedback from the commission as well as what we heard from the residents as well. Because there are, there are few strong, at least I felt, there are a few strong points there that need to be evaluated, looked at. Ignoring them in my mind will not be a good thing, good thing for that. Again, it's my mind, somebody might disagree with that, that's absolutely fine. But ignoring those comments completely will not be a good thing, will not be the right thing to do. So we all want to do the right thing, want to do that. And I feel personally right now, we should take a pause and that will be the right thing, revisit this thing, write it down, capture all the comments, all that, what we learned today. And, and it needs to go through the policy committee as well. It needs to go through that. I think that is the right place to have these discussions, let them go through that and comes to the commission, the regular process. So that will be my comment.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitra. Director Perez Alonso, you want to say something?
Appreciate, just trying to get clarity and make sure that I, that we hear everything that we heard. So it seems as if the commission has a consensus to send back the comments to staff to make some changes, but then take these changes to the policy committee. The policy committee will then review the changes and the policy as a whole, that's a question. Just to clarify that, I think that, I think that's what I heard. Is it, is the committee looking at the complete policy or just the changes that are kind of included? I'm just trying to make sure that we, it is targeted for, for their work. Just want to make sure I know what, what they're doing, what we're asking of them as they kind of go through. I hope that's clear. And also I wanted to point out that, so some of the things that we did hear from the commission to include was to include, and this is in no particular order, an owner kind of designate that is the department director and or designee that is, that owns the, the document, to add clarity and steps to the allocation process, to add the commission approval to any new cosponsored group, to add adverbiage that will have staff respond to a, whether it be an, an application or whether it be to a email that, that talks about recancellations or refunds, so that there's confirmation on there. There's also a request to have tiers one and two defined a little bit further. And then also to have as a criteria, the evaluation of capacity before someone is a cosponsor group. Those are the things that I heard to specifically add in there in, in the policy. When we're talking about the policy and what's going to move back to the policy committee, I want to make sure that I added that. I didn't know if there's anything else that needed to be added prior to going to the policy committee. And also to clarify, we are in no rush. I mean, we do have a policy that is in place and we continue to follow that policy right now. And we will continue to do so until any new updates are done as well.
So Director Perez, I just want to ask a question because we're in comment sections from a standpoint of Robert rules. You're asking us a question and so I'm not sure.
It was a question of clarity for the direction that I'm hearing.
We're allowed, we're allowed to answer, yeah, I just want to make sure, okay. I was looking over the, over the mic, okay. So does anyone want to answer a Henry's question? I can, but go ahead. Commissioner Levy or Vice Chair Levy, sorry.
Okay. I, I think, so what we were being asked to do tonight was approve the policy as a whole with these changes, right? So I think the policy committee would primarily be focused on these changes plus the items that we've, you know, discussed tonight to add. And then, you know, the existing language, which wasn't in, I, I'm just going to use the terms in blue or yellow. I don't necessarily think is the target of that review, but, you know, you need it in order to get the whole picture of the, the policy as a whole. So does that provide some clarity to you?
That is helpful, thank you.
Commissioner Mitra?
That was, that was the last one.
Oh, that was, okay. I, anybody else before I comment?
I would just say that when you're talking about the tiered approach, I would be interested in seeing that, us diving into that aspect of it a little bit more. I mean, that's why policies are made, right? It's, it's when issues come up and it's why policies are revised. So this is just part of the, this is the nature of the beast. So, but that, that's the piece that I would specifically want to learn more about.
Anybody else?
Dirk Perezono, I am all about, we should review the whole policy, not just a highlighted, not just a blue. It just, we should look at the policy, go through it, make sure we're defendable in the policy committee. So everything you outlined. So everything you outlined as steps is what I agree with, but I don't want to put the scope just in the highlight, blue, or yellow, be the whole policy. So we can just look at the whole thing and also, I think we get feedback along the way in the policy committee is like public meeting, correct? Yeah, yeah. That way people.
I have to double check that and that, that would be my first policy committee.
Is, is that true in policy committees? Public comes to give a comment in the policies committee, right? So that way people can come and comment on the policy. I just want to double check so we're clear on the feedback loop.
Unfamiliarity with how this commission has traditionally been, been run, but if this is a standing committee, then it is subject to Brown Act and needs to be open to the public.
Okay, so it is. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. So yeah, we're good.
We'll clarify all that as well.
Okay, I think we're good. Okay, Commissioner Shetty, go ahead.
Sorry, one last comment. I know one of the speaker rightfully mentioned the competition is good. I'm all for competition because that increases the efficiency. But looking at the high demand and looking at the future one, from here to the next four-year, five-year, that's why I'm suggesting and recommending we do this right.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Shetty. So Director Ferrazano, I, I want to make sure that we don't need a motion or do we need?
No, we're good. We have marching orders to move forward to go back and revise and then have the discussion with the policy committee prior to coming back to the full commission.
Thanks for the coaching, I appreciate it. Is everyone comfortable with doing that? Just had nods, okay. Okay, Keith, thanks so much. It's great spending the past three hours with you.
Yeah. Thanks, Keith. I would say Keith and the whole staff.
Yeah, and the whole staff, sorry.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you everyone up for bringing your comments. Okay, so next we are going to our director's report.
And good evening once again, chair and commissioners. This is just a brief report. I know that all the commissioners, again, and I encourage this from the first day I met you, that the, the activity report for the month of October is read cover to cover. I know you love all the pictures and all the information in there. I really won't go over that so much, but as, as much as just kind of overview of other items that might be going on within the, within the department and also within the goals that the commission kind of came about when they did their workshop. Again, just a reminder, the, the activity report really is a snapshot of the activities that have gone on through the month, some highlights that we wanted to share, inclusive of, you know, anything upcoming. And I know that there's been some feedback as to having more of a robust upcoming list. We can do our best to have as much as we can have on there that, that would span the month, previous and or ahead. I can't say that everything will be on there, but we definitely will have, you know, what we can to, to span some time so that the commission is aware. Again, it's just a look back of what it is with a small little box of looking forward. So I wanted to make sure that we, we understand what, what the intent of is the, the activity report is really to tell our story and to share with you folks kind of the things that are going on. And that is also with, I know I introduced the impact calendar that you saw last month. You will be getting yours in the email, in an email form. It's really just be shot out to each one of you at the, hopefully at the beginning of the month, just as a quick snapshot with the intent for the commissioners again to share it with others or just for you to have a good little snapshot for yourself of what's going on there. As things go forward and we talk about communication plan and, and how we look with the department, one of the areas I wanted to take a peek at was our recreation guide. We currently doing an evaluation of the recreation guide and I'm looking forward to having that kind of have a different look as we move forward and a colorful look. So we're looking to have a full color recreation guide that will be sent out. So we are currently working on the design on that and then also just to have that be part of the future. And I think that's one, as one of the biggest pieces of marketing and communication that we have to have that look its best that we really can, we will be working towards kind of getting that. So I can, I confidently say that at the very least, you know, I'm looking at the next, the spring guide will be in color and I'm super excited for that. But we are currently working on that for you as you, as you see that coming. Other thing, just a little tidbit, the teen services leadership class that started in October is going to be kicking, you know, going all the way through December 4th. They have a good group of kids that are in there learning what is going on with the city and how to best engage with what's happening here. Couple of updates from our park amenities. We are, we do know that right now around January 5th, the construction will happen on the shade structure at, right outside the terrace room at the San Ramon Community Center. So looking forward to that. Not sure if you have all looked up in the sky, but we do know the eagle is hovering still, but we do know that the anticipated landing would be the 21st of this month. So we're looking at the 21st as a landing and we're looking at somewhere around December 8th as kind of a grand opening and welcoming to the eagle. So you will have more information to come for you folks on that as well. But we do look forward to having the big eagle coming over to Memorial Park and really kind of making a statement as it stands perched and enjoying, and enjoying everything that it has to offer there. Again, we have our folks, you know, I, this, I have to take this opportunity to thank our public services and our maintenance staff just for all that they do to get all of our facilities and fields and pools and everything just up to date and kind of keep them, keeping us safe. So I just want to thank them. You know, they do that on top of their other duties, like they just recently had a walk through, the one-year walkthrough at Sunrise Ridge Park to make sure that we, you know, all the warranty items are addressed. So they are constantly, you know, on top of things and making sure that they are looking at things anywhere from lighting to parking to backstops, everything that's in there, they're, they're on top of it and we just appreciate them. One of the things that they are also looking at is making sure that all the pencil lights around Central Park are being replaced and hopefully up and ready to go for the holidays. So stay tuned, we're looking for that to come through and enjoy the color that will be going on around there. And then in other news right now, we did have the theater management services request for qualifications. We did have an intent to select a venue tech is the company that we have posted. Venue tech is the company that currently, we currently work with to manage our, our theater and, and manage its services as well, but looking forward to reworking with them again. So as they came in with the, you know, the best bid. Just a reminder too, as the budget comes out, we, you know, there, there may be some things that we'll be able to present, you know, we, we are learning this new, what I would say, the new scheduling, we're working into our mid-year budgeting right now and then we're going to be, beginning of the year, working into our next year's budget. That's a little bit of a difference where I think in years past, they've worked on everything at the same time at this time, but really our finance director and the finance team are taking some time to work with each department and, and with, with the council to ensure that, you know, the financial picture is sound and that we're moving in a very intentional way. So we look forward to any updates that we have, we will provide, but there's nothing other than schedules are changing and we're moving forward. Other upcoming events, this weekend on the 16th, we have the yellow, and I shared this last time too, the Yellow Tulip Project. The community is invited to come plant yellow tulips at the Hope Garden at Memorial Park. So you can almost see where the eagle is going to land, but you want to go take, take care of the tulips first, so hang in there. The Baja Bug Fitness Race, again, Saturday, December 6th, that's going to start early in the morning. We will be sending out an invite to the commissioners to sign up if you'd like to assist at the finish line. So stay tuned for an RSVP that comes out probably by tomorrow is our, is our intended date with, with any kind of response from you back to on the first of December, by the first. But if you get it in your mail, please respond and kind of bring it back. Saturday, December 13th, the Holiday on the Farm, this event is going to run from 11:00 to 2:00. We look forward to everyone coming to the Forest Home Farms to enjoy that old fashioned holiday gathering. One of the things just to be aware of, I know typically we have done rain or shine. We also recognize that rain isn't the best thing for this particular event. So it might be a possibility if it rains or if it's too damp, that might get canceled, but we really don't want to do that. But we want to just give that heads up that the opportunity to have a safe environment is what we're really looking for, but we do hope that the, the sun will be shining and we will all be there and enjoying the old fashioned ornament making and the magic show and all things that, that offer with that particular event. That's the quick, brief update that I have for you folks. Thank you for the time and I am here for any questions.
Say, do I have any questions? And Director Ferrazano, did you read Commissioner Osland's notes to you?
I did.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, if there's no questions, we will go into the commission liaison reports and announcements. So Commissioner Liaison Reports and Announcements. So do you mind going first, Commissioner Shetty? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll talk about yesterday's meeting, rather long meeting, city council that went beyond 11 o'clock call. Because of some logistic issue, I attended online. So two main items are discussed. One is awesome presentation by Eden Housing Program for the affordable housing. That was very, very informative. They, they talked in detail about their upcoming facilities, et cetera, and what service and program they provide. Other major item was merging, there was a proposal to merge Climate Action, San Ramon, the Transport Advisory and Open, Open Space Advisory Committee into the newly proposed San Ramon Sustainable Sustainability Committee. But the end result was Open Space Advisory Committee and Climate, Climate Action Committee, no, Open Space and Transport Committee, they left as it is because they want to do more studies, but the Climate Action Task Force and is merged with the San Ramon, newly formed San Ramon Sustainability Advisory Committee. A little bit complicated, but it was a long meeting with a good discussion. That's it.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Levy.
Sure. So since our last meeting, there were, have been two planning commission meetings, so I'll just quickly cover both. The October 21st Planning Commission Meeting had two items of note. There was a public hearing on revisions to Bishop Ranch 11's residential development there, which is located at 2301 Camino Ramon. That is a 195 unit complex, 128 of those units, single family, 67 multifamily. It was approved originally by the planning commission in March and then a development agreement was approved by the city council in September. That development agreement allowed the developer to potentially transfer the, those affordable units from that complex to a different one through a process called land dedication, which is, you know, permissible under the development agreement. And so the developer was seeking to do that. They wanted to transfer originally 29 affordable units to a new development, the Bishop Ranch Affordable Apartments, and actually increase that count from 29 to 53. So they needed to seek permission to do that from the planning commission. They were also seeking a minor exception because they were moving the affordable units out. They needed to reduce their parking density, so they needed to have a 10% parking reduction approved. And the planning commission did approve that. It is pretty routine because it was part of the development agreement that the city council approved and it was, you know, permissible. So that's the first item. The second item was also very similar, it was essentially a similar situation, but for a different property. This was for Avalon Bay Bishop Ranch 3A apartment complex located at 6200 Bolinger Canyon Road. That one is 457 rental units is what was approved with originally 69 of them affordable. The planning commission had originally approved that in June 2024 and then the city council approved the development agreement in September. And again, the developer wanted to satisfy the affordable housing obligation through land dedication, move those affordable units out of that complex over to the Bishop Ranch Affordable Homes one. And so that's the 69 units, actually we're increasing that to 86 units to do that and also needed to do a 15% parking reduction as a result of those changes. And they were able to keep the parking spaces for the residential units there. They mostly just took the reduction out of the guest parking spaces there. So again, pretty routine, the planning commission approved that as well. And then very similar situation, the November 4th Planning Commission Meeting had essentially two items. One of them was another request to approve an exception, yeah, an exception, revisions to the Bartlett Residential Projects located at 2527 Camino Ramon. That one was originally 190 units that were approved with 29 of them being affordable. The planning commission approved that in December 2024 and the city council approved the development agreement in September 2025. The developer wanted to transfer their affordable housing obligation to the Bishop Ranch Affordable Apartment Complex through land dedication and make those 29 units actually 51. And well, so with a associated parking reduction. And once again, the planning commission approved that because it's routine and allowed by the development agreement that the city council approved. And then the only other item of note there was a study session about the proposed Orchards Affordable Apartments Development Project, which is located at 6001 Bolinger Canyon Road. This is a very early look before it gets too far along in the process for the planning commission to ask clarifying questions, for people to provide public comments, so no decisions are being made, it's just a forum to kind of review it early on. That's a 100 unit development, again, still very early. And if you have questions about that, I'd encourage you to go back and view the presentation in that meeting. Those are the planning commission meetings. Real quick, I do want to plug two upcoming jazz concerts for the Library Foundation. One is this Saturday, November 15th at 7:30. Alan Harris is performing. He is a jazz musician and also a Shakespearean aficionado. So he does Shakespeare and poetry as part of his routine. So it should be a very interesting experience and I encourage everyone to check it out. There's still tickets available. And then the other one is on Saturday, December 6th, which is the same day as the Baja Bug Run. So after you finish that, you can go and check out this blues concert by Chris Kane at 7:30, also at the San Ramon Library. It should be a great time. Tickets are available at sandramonperformingarts.com. And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mitra, I mean Levy, sorry. Commissioner Mitra, I jumped in my mind, obviously. So we got that.
Okay, so teen council meeting, of course, our, our student commissioner will definitely go through that. So I don't want to take the, take too much out of that, but just wanted to highlight a few things that I observed is a few things, there are, there are a few items. So one was outstanding teen citizenship award, so to Danya Prakash, right? Danya Prakash. And I was reading through her, her work, that is pretty impressive. The, he, she did a humanitarian in focus youth organization building for empathy, including the safety of the neurodiverse students and the community who are impacted by opioid crisis, raised over 400, $400,000 for schools for autism spectrum. So raising funds, doing all those sort of work. So thank you, Danya, for hearing, hearing this. Thank you, we truly deserve that. We also had senior tech days. So I think that's our student commissioner go over that as well as approving the alternate December meeting dates and senior tech days on that, yeah, teen council at our committee meetings as well. So that's pretty much it, but I don't want to go too, too much on the individual details.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitra. Commissioner Conick?
Thank you, thank you. Library Advisory Committee in October, two things, they, the library advisory committee heard from staff about the patron survey that was done. They had a total of 429 responses from San Ramon Library patrons, 95 responses from, from Doherty Station library users. Survey questions focused on primary library usage, language preferences, visitations, service awareness, satisfaction in person and online service usage, accessibility and patron demographics. And that information will help inform kind of facility use as well as programming going forward. So it was, it was good stuff. And they were, they were, I think, a little disappointed in the, in the, the response level from the Doherty Station. But the other thing was the approval of the Story Walk selection for winter 25, 26. Between two books. As you know, the Story Walk is here at the community center and it's just a lovely thing that, that was a partnership with the San Ramon Rotary Club at the time, by the way. Except Antarctica was one of the selections and the other was the Big Umbrella. And unfortunately I had to leave like two minutes before they decided and the minutes haven't been posted. So you're in suspense, I'm in suspense.
What was, what was your favorite?
I liked the, the Big Umbrella, yeah. Yeah. Just graphically, it was, yeah. It was the one you tried to go for, yeah. Plus it's raining outside.
It is, ties them with everything. Thank you.
And I just wanted to echo Henry's comment about, so this Sunday, the, the planting tulips at Memorial Park. It is a, a partnership with the national nonprofit, the Yellow Tulip Project. And it came about because one of our own, Trevor Fabrique, lost his life to, to suicide. And, and I just want to commend the, the Parks and Community Services Department and, Brad and Becky and everybody who was involved in, in making that happen. and Brad and Becky and everybody who was involved in, in making that happen. And it's a wonderful space. It's a space where you can go and just reflect. And this Sunday at 2 o'clock, we're going to be planting replacement tulips and we'll watch them bloom come springtime. So it's, 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 it's a nice project and it's a, it's just a testimony to, I think, the responsiveness of our staff and how willing we are to really focus on community needs. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Commissioner Glenn. Okay, Student Commissioner Donna Gola. All right. Glad to take a shot.
So the October 21st, our teen council meeting, we had three main items that we wanted to focus on. So first was the teen council, the teen citizenship award that we award every year. So it's just a way that the teen council is able to recognize a teen who has really just used the resources that are available to them and this community is in an especially impactful way. So I know she, he talked a little bit about Danya. So like aside from her nonprofit and additionally raising $4,000, $400,000 to support that Bay Area school, she also has a podcast and social media, which has reached over 16,000 people. And she's also a youth ambassador for the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse. So she's trained faculty, she's organized community campaigns. And she's also helped distribute over 2,000 Narcan kits. So yeah, she's incredible and we really just were honored to bring her accomplishments to light and just show what teens in San Ramon are capable of achieving. Our second item was the approval of our senior tech dates and flyers. So just talking about potential dates that our teen council members would be available for the senior tech days. Our last, the, the first one was this past Monday. So that was exciting and we continue to look forward to be a part of that partnership between the youth and seniors and promoting that. And then our third item that was a big part of that meeting was to appoint our senior tech days and teen wellness ad hoc committees. So the people that will be focused on working towards those goals for the rest of the year. So part of that is pushing forward a lot of wellness initiatives in San Ramon, but also this year working with a larger ambassador group to really try and formulate initiatives a little bit better that we want to push forward, which has been a big focus recently, just receiving and reviewing and interviewing all of these applicants for the ambassador program with our ad hoc, which we'll be approving at our next meeting. So again, just keeping to one of our goals as teen council that we determined at the beginning of the year to really develop and expand our ambassador program. Not only like in its participation, but the impact that it can have throughout the rest of the year.
Great. Thank you so much. Great report, by the way.
Chair Breed, I have one more announcement. I'm sorry. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, I apologize because Daniel will kill me if I don't. But the San Ramon Chamber of Commerce, our gala, Community Awards Night is December 3rd. Tickets are on sale. There are some really cool people who are going to be honored that night. So for tickets, go to samramon.org.
12-3, Carrie. Sorry. It's 12-3 you said?
Yes, December 3rd. At Bridges.
Bridges, thank you. Okay, I am last. So I, not that we're talking about cosponsor, but the cosponsor group had a meeting. So I will tell you, for us, I, I think from the city, I always feel proud in those meetings because our, is it, what's Brett? Is it Brett from the Services Department? Brett? Yeah. He sits with cosponsor group and say, how can I help? What's wrong with your fields, right? And or your gyms or, you know, it's really, it's really cool how he approaches the co-users, cosponsors, sorry, cosponsor group and how the city is very open to anything and in sense of fixing stuff, right? And if a co-user group gets, or cosponsor group gets out there far enough advanced, there's, you know, we start with yes as a city, which is super cool to see. The other thing that was kind of the big news was shared tonight, having our cosponsor group able to co-invest in projects they want to get done. Whether it's, you know, something to a soccer field to be under the baseball community wanted longer bases. You know, there's a pathway for now to now for them to go do that. And I think that's really great that they're, that option's out there. And I've talked with Director Perezana and getting a really clear process on how that works, but you know, the city's starting with yes, and how can we work with you to get it done? And I think it's everyone sensitive to where we are as a city from a budget standpoint. So it gives us other avenues for our city field to, you know, always look pristine and want people to go there. So there was an issue with the soccer club leaving their goals out. Just kidding you. So always right. So the rest of it was more process on further user group on getting their forms in on time and then also talking about, you know, working the allocation for 2026. So those were kind of the, the big events. And the other big thing I would do, I do want to call out is, we didn't really talk a lot about it. Our, our user, our cosponsor groups do, when they bring tournaments, they bring a lot of people in for tournaments, whether it's crickets, whether it's, whether it's San Ramon football. I mean, I think even from a soccer standpoint, our city can grow and Director Perezana can correct me, but I think we can grow from three to 4,000 people during a soccer tournament and all that's tax revenue. So as we continue to work with those groups, how do we continue to host the tournaments that can, you know, help grow our cities and drive some of our businesses? So I'm a big fan of that. The other, I attended the city council meeting. I have the second one, the last month, and there was a finance update on our budget, which is, I will share a couple factoids for you. Right now, our expenses are at 9% year over year and our revenue is up 4%. So, you know, I tell you that. And then part of the recommendation, which I, we have a new city finance manager and she was really good in a sense of how do we get out, out ahead of it? And all those numbers exclude Measure N. I will say Measure N was massively important to our, our city. A compliment to everyone who worked on Measure N. But as they look at the data, they try and look at it without Measure N tax revenue, because I believe that ends in 2034. So they're trying to get out in front of how do we get our forecast better? So they spend a lot of time with city council updating some of the potential options and they're asking councils start thinking a little further out on planning our finances. So it was very fast, not fast, and very, I think the city's trying to be really good storage of the money. So those are the my reports from my big committee. So go ahead.
So I'm sorry, first of all, Henry, I'm really sorry. I should have brought up during the topic discussions today and I know Keith has left and the staff has left. So one of the strong thing that we are hearing is like one third of the allocation gone away, right? And that was one thing over and over, over again on that. Is it possible to bring that allocations to review? Because if we are seeing any kind of conflict future on that, if this is the starting point and where there's the one, is it possible to see the allocation? Again, I'm just on that because I think we need to, if that is the main concern, that one third of the allocations gone away and that will impact their whole sports operations, business, bottom line, training, everything that's, that's we heard on that. So probably there's something we need to review that. And that's what my opinion, I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I personally feel that we should be reviewing that as well, part of the whole, whole thing. Do you want to respond?
If I'm hearing correctly, what you're asking for is to have the allocations come to you specifically regarding what I would assume was the cricket group?
That's the one thing.
The two cricket, you would like the commission to weigh in on the allocations. If I'm hearing that correctly. And if I may just provide some context. We are currently in the period, review period, and all the groups got till, till November 3rd to ask for any changes or to put in any disputes that they may have for their, for their particular allocations. I will say that not every group got every allocation that they requested, you know, and I see we have one of the biggest groups that is, is sitting and representing with the soccer club. They also did not get all of the allocations that they chose because there was another cosponsor group that requested some time and needed some time. In this particular case, we are still within that timeframe where we're working with the groups we have till the 17th in order to work with them and offer up solutions. So we, so to say I'm going to bring that back, I don't know what to bring back because that may all be said and done by the time it's going there. And I'm not also quite sure I would have to double check with our city attorney and the charge of the commission, whether or not that's even something that should be coming back to you folks. So I can definitely check on that. But I would say at this point, we're still within the review period with our allocations and, and what we are specifically maybe talking about is the first Saturday of the month, a Wednesdays and one Sunday of the month. So that's, you know, the, the nutshell of what may have been reallocated to the other cosponsor group. Again, trying to serve the, you know, I'm not sure I can get in a full discussion at this moment because it's not necessarily where the, the agenda is unclosed, but that's to kind of give some context on that.
Yep. Of course, I should have brought it up earlier, but yeah, on that.
Okay, so my, my last, back to me, my last report. Hey, I just want to say one last thing is, you know, Henry's been in role for what, two, three months? And I've seen some massive changes within our parks. Parks makes life better. You know, the focus on our strategy, we called out earlier, and it doesn't go unrecognized by me on some of the cool changes. Even I walked in the office every day. Everyone's got Parks Make Life Better and what the, where our focus is and where our priority is. So I just want to let you know, we're seeing it. It's great. That's a lot of work as a leader to do that. So and you're still, I think, new in your role. So thank you so much for all your hard work. Okay. That is all we have for today. So we are going to adjourn, but Vice Chair Levy, I can't see the clock. 8:15. So we are done. Thank you everyone for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.